So you might... ...even have...
Hands, put your empty hands in mine. And scars, show me all the scars you hide. And hey, if your wings are broken, please take mine till yours can open too. Cause I'm gonna stand by you. Oh, truth, make kaleidoscopes in your eyes. And hurt, I know you're hurting, but so am I. And love, if your wings are broken, borrow mine till yours can open too. Cause I'm gonna stand by you. Even if we break it down, we can find a way to break through. Even if we can't find heaven, I'll walk through hell with you. Love, you're not alone. Cause I'm gonna stand by you. Even if we can't find heaven, I'm gonna stand by you. Even if we can't find heaven, I'll walk through hell with you. Love, you're not alone. Cause I'm gonna stand by you. Yeah, you're all I never knew I needed. And the heart, sometimes it's unclear why it's beating. And love, if your wings are broken, we can break through those emotions too. Cause I'm gonna stand by you. And oh, truth, I guess truth is what you believe in. And faith, I think faith has happened reason. And I know my love, if your wings are broken, borrow mine till yours can open too. Cause I'm gonna stand by you. Even if we break it down, we can find a way to break through. Even if we can't find heaven, I'll walk through hell with you. Love, you're not alone. Cause I'm gonna stand by you. Even if we can't find heaven, I'm gonna stand by you. Even if we can't find heaven, I'll walk through hell with you. Love, you're not alone. Cause I'm gonna stand by you. I'll be your eyes, till yours can shine. And I'll be your arms, I'll be your steady satellite. And when you can't rise, well, I'll cry with you on hands and knees toes. Oh, I'm gonna stand by you. Even if we break it down, we can find a way to break through. Come on. Even if we can't find heaven, I'll walk through hell with you. Love, you're not alone. Cause I'm gonna stand by you. Even if we can't find heaven, I'm gonna stand by you. Even if we can't find heaven, I'll walk through hell with you. Love, you're not alone. Cause I'm gonna stand by you. Love, you're not alone. I'm gonna stand by you. Even if we can't find heaven, ever, ever. I'm gonna stand by you.
Teachers on strike in West Virginia. It is sad to see that because it reminds me of the days when I used to see my teachers holding a picket sign in Troy. And I hope that can be resolved soon. By the way, we are honoring Metro Detroit area teachers, the ones you feel need honoring, with Jay Towers in the Morning Teacher of the Week Award nominations right now at wnic.com.
One hundred point three WNIC traffic.
Good evening. Row construction has your right lane closed. Six ninety-six eastbound at Evergreen. You're delayed about ten minutes right now. Step and go from the lodge. That'll be through eight AM tomorrow morning for emergency bridge repairs also. Slow traffic seventy-five northbound between the Davidson and Twelve Mile. We're watching delays ninety-four eastbound between the Lodge and Connor. And the Taco Freeway southbound between Seven Mile and Schoolcraft. We're slow at least a few minutes. Be careful. I'm Bree with traffic.
This report brought to you by Kroger. Hurry into Kroger for the Buy Five Save Five Sale. Buy five participating items and save five dollars instantly at checkout with your card. Look for the special tags and mix and match your favorites like Green Mountain Coffee, Kellogg's Cereal, and more. Fresh food, low prices at Kroger.
And we're here. We will call the study session of March fifth already, isn't it? March fifth, two thousand and eighteen to order. The purpose of this study session is to discuss the historical commission's letter to the mayor and city council. If I could have row call.
Councilperson Darsinski.
Yeah.
Higgins.
Here.
Kelsey.
Here.
Murphy.
Here.
Parkinson.
Here.
Mayor Carter.
Here. I think to start our meeting off, I will get into the record our, the letter that was from Chairperson James Goodell of the Lincoln Park Historical Commission. Dear Mayor Carnes and City Council, over the past several years, the Lincoln Park Historical Commission has been evaluating our options regarding the operational funding of the Historical Museum. City was unable to continue its financial support for the museum beginning in two thousand and thirteen, when the city entered into emergency management status. Understandably, with the dire financial situation facing the city, the museum became a low priority concern. While being without its long established funding, the Historical Commission also found itself without counsel on how to best proceed. Since that time, we were successful in pursuing temporary funding from the city's Downtown Development Authority with additional help from the Historical Society. The DDA has been extremely helpful and generous in funding museum's operation these past several years. However, after the current fiscal year, which ends in June, the DDA is unable to continue their level of support. The city-appointed Historical Commission has been a municipal entity for now for over forty years, charged during this time with overseeing the museum and its assets, as per chapter two seven two of the City Lincoln Park Municipal Code. We now seek from you advice and counsel as to how best proceed. We request a meeting at convenient time. We'd also like to invite members of the Board of the Historical Society to be a part of this conversation. So we are here for that conversation. And I think to start it off, if who would like to speak for the, I see that...
Pointed Jeff.
I see that the curator Jeff Day has been, has been pointed to. But this is not, we're at a study session here. So numerous people can talk and we're here to try to resolve. So why don't, if somebody would like to... There you go.
In a nutshell, just what you read is basically the concern that is being shared by all of the commissioners and has been for the last four years or so. So they are looking, we are looking for some assistance, whether it's from the city or a city entity of some sort as we move ahead with funding the museum. The museum, I think we all agree, I hope we agree, that it's an important part of the city. We don't want to see it go away. But what's the best way to move forward with that?
Now, the cost for the operation of the museum to continue as it has been is just over seventeen thousand dollars.
It's been right around nineteen, a little over nineteen the last couple of years. But we've had assistance from, in addition to the seventeen that we've been getting from the DDA, we've been getting help from the Historical Society and some fundraising efforts as well. So that's made up the difference of that.
And I know from my time on the commission that you guys really strive to keep that minimal.
Yes, it is. Yeah, my salary is the largest chunk of that funding. So if you were to come in and get somebody to volunteer to do the work that I'm doing, you could cut that in half easily.
But then we're talking about the lights.
Yes, yeah. Well, actually, the utilities, I do have the last fiscal year report. If you would like a copy of that, then you could have that in front of you.
Well, certainly.
Yeah.
Do you have enough for everyone?
I did, yes, I did, yeah.
After you have that distributed, Jeff, just can you give us an overview of what the museum has done in this, in the past year?
If you're looking specifically at this report and then wondering how this money has been reflected over the past year, this is a very cut and dried budget. There's no fat on it. Even the work that we put into the museum on behalf of like doing repair work or inspections, that money, that money isn't even covered by this budget. That money comes from a separate donations fund account, which has, is paid into by donations to the Lincoln Park Historical Museum as opposed to the Lincoln Park Historical Society. So the museum has its own funding account, which is held also at City Hall. So any, any major expenses like this past year where we've had to put money into a ramp a couple of years ago, the air conditioning, any repair work, plumbing repairs, electrical, et cetera, that all comes out of that donations account. So that's, that's not even taken into account in our operating fund, which is what you see in front of you, yeah.
Okay, if you'd just give me an overview of what has gone on in the museum, just the very, over the past year.
Well, the museum has, what we've had, starting with, I guess, the beginning of last year, we finished up an exhibit on Bill Morrison, which was a pretty, I think, successful endeavor for us. It brought a lot of attention to the museum and it certainly brought a lot of honors to a city son of the city of Lincoln Park. And so having Bill there for that was, was a nice event. It was a nice program and the exhibit went, went over very well. So that was the end of sixteen. And then last year, we did a series of programs related to the city's, oh, wait a minute, that was the year before. What did we do last year? Oh, yes, we did. We had the Tucker exhibit. Thank you, yes. We did an exhibit on Tucker car, which was seventy years old last year. The Tucker, Tucker forty-eight, which actually made its debut in forty-seven, was of course the ingenious invention of Lincoln Park resident Preston Tucker. Tucker lived in Lincoln Park in the twenties, thirties. And he and his family were from the area and moved on to Ypsilanti later. And it was when he was living in Ypsilanti that he got involved in the auto industry. But coming from here and having a lot of the family roots in this area were significant to us. And so we thought that this would be a good time to have an exhibit on Tucker and the car. So we did that last year, last summer. We worked with the Tucker Automobile Club of America in putting that together. We had some two hundred objects from their archives and artifacts collected, which they have thousands of. But we just, we had a selection of things that we put on exhibit last summer. And I think that that was, was well attended. We had a nice response to that as well. So that was the summer. And then in the fall...
Will you guys do a monthly, there's a monthly...
Yeah, we do. We do monthly programs. The society does those. That's the Historical Society. They put the monthly programs together, which we have one coming up on Wednesday night, our first one of this, of this year, twenty eighteen. Will be on Wednesday night and it's on the Civil War's Iron Brigade. Many of the men that fought in the Iron Brigade during the war were from the Down River area, specifically the Twenty-Fourth Michigan Volunteer Infantry. So we will have a speaker, George Guth, is going to come and talk about that on Wednesday night. Should be very interesting. George is a fine speaker, former educator. So that's, that's the kind of things that we do on a regular basis.
But also the tree lighting ceremony. You've been playing host over the last...
We did. We host that every December. We have the museum open as a warming center for refreshments. So we've been working with actually the DDA on that project because they actually sponsor the tree lighting. And then we help to host it by having the museum open to the community.
I want to say we also tried, some pictures were blown up. They were placed at very...
The folks, the folks at, the folks at home can't, can't hear you from there. You're welcome to come up to the podium. About a year or so ago, we started a program where we've been putting photographs, enlarged photographs of historic areas of Detroit largely along Fort Street and the current locations, the current business, reflecting what that site had looked like about a hundred or a hundred and twenty some years ago. So that's, that's been another project that we worked on. Thank you, Joe Terenski. Joe was the one who suggested that we do that.
How long has the museum been in operation in the current building?
In the current building since about twenty, oh, about twenty-three, twenty-four years ago. It was, it was a multi-year project, getting the museum to a point where it could actually be open to the public. There was a lot of work being done inside. I think it's official opening. Jim Goodell, your parents, I think, were there for that. Yeah. And I believe that was in nineteen ninety-nine. It was before the millennium. And they were involved in that ceremony. That's when they dedicated the bell, the Goodell Bell. That was the official opening of the museum. But they had been working for about six or seven years. Once the Historical Society acquired the building, and that's a more complicated story, I can go into that if you want. The society raised the money to purchase the post office. But because it was a federal building, they couldn't directly do that themselves. They had to go through the city of Lincoln Park. So they raised the money and gave it to the city, which, and then the city in turn purchased the building on their behalf. So it is technically owned by the city, but it was bought with money that came from the Historical Society. And that was about ninety-three.
And there is a contract with the city that exists?
There is a ninety-nine year lease with the city, yeah. And we have a copy of that.
And have you paid your dollar?
Absolutely. And more.
Jim, I asked a question at our last meeting and maybe you can fill me in a little bit on this. The DDA started to support your organization just a little while ago. Are they now talking about elimination of that support in total? Or are they talking about cutting back? And if they're going to be cutting back, it will be over what period of time?
The information that we received is that once funding for this current fiscal year ended at the end of June, that this would be the last year that they would be funding us at all. That's, that's our understanding, yeah.
As a follow-up question, there's a lot of historical museums and Historical Societies in many of our communities. What are they doing to stay on top of water?
It talks, it depends on who you talk to and which community you talk to them. A lot of communities actually have specific millages in their cities that help to support their cultural and historical efforts. I know Wyandotte, Flat Rock are two examples. Then there are cities like Allen Park, which provide animal, I think, support. Melvindale has nothing to my knowledge. River Rouge has a historical museum that is funded primarily by the city. Ecourse is pretty negligible. I know they're trying to do something in Ecourse. Southgate, then there's the city of Southgate's been providing some efforts to keep its museum open. And I think that support is coming from the city of Southgate also, yeah.
Let's, let's talk about moving forward. What would it, what would be involved in expanding the hours of operation?
You'd have to get staff that can be there on other days.
So it's very, it's basically just volun, needing enough volunteers to come in?
Yeah, we would need volunteers to come in. I can't, I mean, they really can't afford to pay me more than I'm there. So, and part of the hours that I work during the week are hours that, when we're not open, because I can't get a lot of work done when we're open. We have visitors, we have volunteers that come in. So it's difficult for me to focus quite often on projects that I'm working on. So I go in on my own time and work hours, say on Tuesday or Friday, to get my own work done.
I just, I want to be very clear here that, that my entire goal here is to, is to see how we actually expand the operations at a museum. And, and if, and if funding has to increase a little bit to do that, then, then I'm on board. One other question, when you do your fundraising, can you give some examples of how much, of how much money is raised, like say in, in one year or, or, you know, per fundraiser?
Boy, that varies. The funding is, the funding is raised, it depends on what it's raised for. Couple of years ago, when we raised money to get the clock repaired out on the street, we raised all of that money, I think. Didn't we raise all that money? And it was about twenty-eight hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah, we raised all of that in one dinner, one spaghetti dinner. With added donations from folks who couldn't attend the dinner, so they gave us some, some donations. But it was, it surrounded one event.
That's actually really good for spaghetti dinners.
It was, it was a very good event. Yeah, we did, we did quite well. But people knew what it was for. I mean, they could see the clock on the street, you know? They knew it hadn't been working for like seven or eight months. And it was like, you know, okay, let's get this fixed and, you know, here's twenty dollars, here's forty dollars. And so we did. We had no trouble getting the money to, to get that fixed. We've raised money this past year that helped toward the new air conditioning system for the museum, which I think will, will all benefit from this coming year. It hasn't been very good, the comfort level in the museum for several years now. And so we're, we have that hopefully resolved because we haven't really tested it out yet. It'll be, it'll warm pretty soon. So that, those are things that are concrete, that people can see. We also have raised money through the Heritage Plaza Brick Project, which is just outside the museum on the lawn or part of the lawn area next to the Goodell Bell and the, and the flag. So we have had that project that's brought in a couple of thousand dollars as well. So that's, that's helped, you know, in bits and pieces. So there's, there's things like that that have brought in some money.
People still buy those paper stones?
Absolutely. Oh, yes. It's a, it's a continuing project. And I appreciate you mentioning that because we are taking orders through the middle of April for this year's dedications of bricks, which will take place in May when we have our Memorial Day weekend. So, so that's coming up in, in April. We have forums at the museum. I think there's forums upstairs here in the, downstairs in City Hall and also at the library, yeah.
Okay, so again, expanding hours of operation really is not actually about, about a larger budget. It's more just about having the bodies and volunteers.
Right, and it would involve having, you know, lights on, electricity, you know, heat, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so a little bit, a little bit more budget.
A little bit more budget, yeah.
But it's about people.
Right, yeah. If you had volunteers that could come in, you know, when I'm not there, that would be fine, you know? If we had people that could be responsible enough to do that.
And I'm, and I'm belaboring that point, sir, so that, because when this, when this record, when this recording goes out in two weeks onto LPTV, people will see that and hopefully ring the, the museum's phone and, and volunteer because, because I've been to just about every single museum in the Down River area and ours, and, and I grew up in Wyandotte. So, so I've been to the Wyandotte Museum about two hundred times in my life. And, and ours is, is better than Wyandotte's. We, we have the best one. I mean, I'm not, I'm being, and that's unbiased, so, so it's a gem. But we need more hours of operation and we need, and as my girlfriend pointed out, we need to bring in, we need to start hitting the thirty and under crowd and get them pizzazzed on museums, so.
Yeah, we have been doing, well, I can't call it thirty and under, maybe sixty and under. Which is a good, which is a good stretch, you know? Sixty and under is good because it's, the whole group's been, been aging out over the last twenty years. The people that put this museum together, you know, a few decades ago and worked very hard to do that, extraordinarily hard, they are mostly gone now. And so there needs to be another group of people, another generation or two to come up and, and help. And it usually tends to be retirees, people that now find themselves with some extra time after they finish, finish their careers. So that's, that's been kind of the history of a lot of historical groups that have benefited from people, men, women, who have retired, who have an interest in, in their communities, local history, who start getting time. So that's, that's another group of people that we want to try to reach out to.
So our, our goal here is to see if we can work that, work that out.
Yeah.
So, but I'm interested in, we have the commission, which is the appointed bodies from the mayor and council that oversees the operation of the museum. Correct? And then we have the society, which is a group of people that are concerned about the museum and its operation.
Yes, the society has been around longer than the museum. The society was founded in the mid-fifties by a group of people who were pretty much around when the city was founded, you know, like some thirty years earlier. And though, yeah, those are, they are definitely gone now. And so that group of people worked hard to get a museum open to begin with. And it was about that time, early seventies, I think Max was mayor then. That's when the commission was put together to administer the new museum and to keep an eye on it, funding it. funding it as needed. So that's, that's my understanding of the commission. I, I hope that's, is that correct? From what you know, Sherry, you've been on the commission. So the commission really has, has had the authority over the structure of the museum since about nineteen-seventy-two, when it opened, yeah. But the Historical Society has always traditionally been the fundraising arm, the, the people that have provided not only the funds, but the man-hours, the volunteers, help to publicize events, put on programs, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, that's, they're, they're the worker bees, the Historical Society's volunteers. Those are the people that we need to grow the museum, is, we need to grow the society, we need to grow the volunteers, yeah.
Well, as we're looking for the funding, then the question was, would the society be able to fund the operations of the museum?
Would they be able to fund it?
Yes.
Um, not in perpetuity, no. No, they, they don't have that kind of income, no.
Okay, then with that, I think I'm going to, before we get far afield here, I'll talk to Mr. Copper, who, are, do you have any ideas about how this, how we could fund this, or how it could be funded?
Well, excuse me, I, I see a few options. You know, obviously, the, the very first option is the, the DDA remains the, the primary funding source. Probably not likely, but that's an option, if that can be negotiated. The second, I think, is, is potentially some type of phase-out of funding from the, the DDA, where there's possibly a three-party funding of that, which would include maybe the society putting some money towards it, the DDA continuing some money, and the city putting money towards that. I guess the third option is that the city funds it completely, you know, whatever that request is. And within that, I think, you know, there's probably two primary ways the city could go about that. One is to, you know, make a decision that this is more important than something else that we're doing, and, you know, supplant that, that, that funding with funding for the Historical Society. I think the, the second option, within the, the city funding everything, would be, you know, reconsidering the, the advertising tax that the council took off last year. I mean, that would be an appropriate way, because it allows for funding of educational and historical programs for the city to help promote it. You know, again, I, I wouldn't be looking, wouldn't be thinking, you'd be thinking of the fifty thousand dollars, so it'd be a lesser amount, probably said seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars, so that's probably about point three, point four of a mil, or point oh-four of a mil, somewhere around there to raise that. And I guess, you know, probably don't want to hear this, but, you know, you make that decision, that it's not a critical thing to be funded, and the city doesn't fund it at all. Just let the society, or whoever can, you know, step forward and put money towards it, help fund that, and they would have to consider what their operations look like. And that's, that's kind of the four things that I see as an, you know, the way to go about this.
Have you figured per capita cost of?
Well, you know, I wouldn't.
Say twenty thousand?
Wouldn't throw that out there if I didn't.[823.06][823.06](Laughter).
So would you relate what those costs were?
Yes, yes. So if, if we look at, you know, to, to raise, you know, what I was understanding is about seventeen thousand, it'd be somewhere between point oh-three of a mil and point oh-four, so let's call it point oh-three-five. And that would generate in revenue about, you know, somewhere between fifteen thousand and twenty thousand. For a house that's taxable at thirty-five thousand, you're talking about a dollar five a year. For taxable value, fifty thousand would be a buck fifty a year. And for one at seventy-five thousand, it'd be two dollars and twenty-five cents. And that's kind of, you know, the midpoint, you know, if you look at those three values, there's probably not a lot above the seventy-five thousand taxable value, but everything's underneath that. If you went to point oh-four mil, which would be the top, and which would produce about twenty thousand dollars, under last, this is based upon last year's or the current year's millage, we generate about twenty, twenty thousand nine hundred dollars. That's a buck forty for a thirty-five thousand dollar taxable value home, two dollars for a fifty thousand dollar home taxable value, and three dollars for a setting five thousand dollar home.
Are there capital expenses coming at?
Well, I think that's, that's, you know, I know, yeah, they've, you know, they took care of the air conditioning, but I think there are other capital issues with that. I believe the roof is at a point where, if I'm not mistaken, it's beyond its useful life, so we'd have to be looking at that. You know, under the agreement, the ninety-nine year lease, it is the city's responsibilities to deal with those larger capital items. And, and, you know, really having sat down with Jeff to go through what, what are the needs of that? But that's part of the overall capital project process that we'll be getting into next year, some of these ancillary properties that, that we own, and, you know, just haven't provided support to yet. So yes, the answer is yes.
Tom, the president?
Yes, Matt, I've got a couple of questions. With regard to reinstating a portion of that tax that we finally cut back on, I would hope that we're not looking at adding something again without the people's approval, like we have in the past on several occasions. Are you looking for a vote on this? You're saying that it would cost a dollar five or something, that people could say, yes, we're for that, instead of just slapping them with it?
Well, that, that particular section of the state code is, leaves that decision to do that at the council level, mayor and council. So it does not require a vote of the, the people. If you wanted to do something like that, what I would suggest is, if you wanted a vote of people, that you, you put that on as headly override. I mean, that would be another way to go about that, and you have some capacity, I can't remember offhand.
Are we not below the, the level right now, though, that we have to go the override? I mean, we, we've got a little bit of space in there anyway.
No, no, we, we are, I think, we're total at nineteen, excuse me, eighteen point nine eight is where we're at. And we, we have authority to go up to twenty. And so we'd be doing an override to increase it beyond the eighteen nine eight that we are now.
And that would be without the consent of the people?
No, 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 no. That's what I'm saying is.
Okay, that's what's important to me.
Yeah. If, if you wanted to address it in a manner that, that the voters had say on it, what I'm suggesting is, the way to go about that is probably looking at a headly override, and you would put that on, and then the voters would determine whether that funding should go that way or not.
And that would be fine with me. The, the second part of my question is, are we not eligible at all for any block grant funding for that? They're in the block grant area, basically.
I would, you know, I, I didn't think about that. I would have to look at CDBG protocols for that, to see if we would be able to fund it that way. I mean, it's a good idea, I, I didn't think of that.
Well, I figured that, we're talking about a pretty small amount here, and I would think a few bucks from block grant would solve the problem.
Yeah, if it would be, you know, even, even though it's, it's potentially in an eligible census tract, there are some other checkmarks that would have to be in place there.
Maybe even a combination, if necessary.
Thanks. How much was the, the tax that we've removed? Was it fifty thousand?
Yeah, we, we were raising fifty thousand, so it was like about point oh-nine-five.
You've got a question through the.
Yes, you go ahead.
Obviously, the, the museum's not going to say it nineteen thousand. Stuff goes up, so the money's going to have to be in a sliding factor, because every time you turn around, something goes up. So the question I got is, is that, why don't, and I think Jeff alluded to it, why don't we just put a millage on for the museum specifically, pay it at a certain amount of money, because, or sliding factor, however you want to call it, because of inflation, so you have to keep going back? Let the people vote on it, because that's what we're talking about, supporting an institution, which we all agree to up here, and the society agrees to, and have them vote on it. And that way, there, there's no issue with, you know, as far as money, and then the building, I guess we're responsible for, so that's not even an issue. We take care of whatever comes up, we'll have to take that out of our general budget.
Your honor, that's, that's another question that you, that I guess Jeff had raised. If we are leasing the building, why are they paying for the air conditioning?
Well, they probably did it because they knew the city, at the point in time when it needed to, probably couldn't.
We have, we have traditionally been doing, well, I should say, the commission for the museum has been doing all those major expenses, as I mentioned, out of, out of the D account, which is the donations account, money that comes to the museum as opposed to going to the Historical Society. It gets, gets a little confusing, I think. But the museum has its own donations repository, which is with the city. It's one of our accounts with, with the finance department. So we have two accounts. We have the operating account, which you see in front of you, and then we have a donations account, which I think is probably down to about twelve thousand dollars, yeah. So that money is used for emergencies, you know, if we need something. We, we've never gone to the city and said, can you guys fix this for us? I don't think we've done that. Although, I think in some regards, DPS has done things for us, you know, when, when we've needed small things, you know, little things, but, but nothing, nothing major, nothing major has been done that we haven't paid for.
I, I guess to my point, though, if I'm leasing a building, I'm responsible for that building, and, and if you're in that dire straits, I don't see why you should be paying for that. I mean, our building, right?
Well, they, our building, but they, they paid for it, and it seems to me that they're just trying to be good partners with this, and not putting it on the city as much as, much as possible.
I think so, yeah, I think so. In fact, actually, at one time, the museum was getting over twenty-one thousand a year, at some time, probably till about four or five years ago, they were getting twenty-one thousand from the city for upkeep of the museum. So that, that also helped to cover expenses like that, you know, major repairs, yeah.
Okay, is there budget room for the twenty-one thousand in this year, without elimination of something else?
Well, (laugh) someone answered the question for me. At, at this point, you know, we're just finalizing everything, so it's a little bit difficult today to be able to answer that question. But, but again, I mean, you know, the way that we've been budgeting, you know, there's always going to be a lot of choices. I mean, there's things that we could be doing that we're not going to be doing because of that. So I'm going to assume that in the end, you know, it's, it's going to be a choice. You know, we don't do this, we do that.
So whether it would be the, what'd you call that, first tax?
Advertising.
The advertising?
Advertising or a headly override?
Whether it be the advertising or the headly override, then there should be something additional into it to allow for a capital fund to be done for repairs of the building?
Is, or we, yeah, I mean, I would, I would, you know, I, I would advocate to set it up for success, and we know that there's going to be, you know, expenses related to the building, not just the operations, that if, you know, the city were going to be looking to fund that, that, you know, we understand that we have to set aside more than just what they're asking for related to operations. I mean, again, you know, that, that roof is probably eighty thousand dollar-ish project alone.
Well, through the chair.
Yes, sir. If, depending whichever way we go, but you have to have some stability, so we usually do a five-year budget. So if we're going to do the issue of we pay for it, then we should farm it out for five years, so the society and the museum know for five years you got X amount of money. On the other hand, that was the idea of having the residents have a say-so, because then it's continuous funding, and it gets funded all the time, irregardless what administration or who's on society, whatever the case may be, it gets funded and it gets to be a staple of the community. That way, you can work on the attendance issues and all that, without worrying about having to raise X amount of money. You can use that for maybe promotional, or whatever you want to call it, to get more attendance or promote the museum. I mean, the bottom line is that, otherwise, what's going to happen is that, depending on which way it goes, it's, you know, funding comes and goes, you know? And that's what the, that's what started the issue in the first time, when the city went under, that, that was one of the first things that went. The other thing I would suggest is, maybe we approach the DDA and ask them if they don't mind a smooth period to come in to where we can, you know, I guess what I'm saying is, get them to maybe half or a quarter or whatever, to get it to where we can do it, and eventually we agree to take it. Or we agree to put the millage up on the ballot and get an answer yes or no, and then we go from there.
Well, this is a question that, that may have, or should have arisen three years ago, when the DDA just took over and, and paid it. Just thought that it was important, and it was part of the Downtown Development Authority area and stuff, but it, it's not something that the DDA.
We kind of approached them out of the blue on that idea. They didn't really offer, I mean, they didn't come to us and say, we want to help you out. You know, we wrote to them and said, you know, that we've lost our funding, would you be able to help us out with part of our funding this year? And that first year, I think the society paid for half, and the DDA paid for half. Then the next year, we went to them and asked for the whole thing, and they, they were agreeable, so they paid for seventeen, yeah.
As a member of the DDA, I'm, I'm familiar with that. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Jeff and, and everybody, this is always a big thing to me, because, because I've been, I've been on this particular government website, but, um, what's, there, somewhere within the known universe, there's all, there's got to be grants for, for, for facilities and museums like this. Is that, um, is that?
Well, grants are initially for specific projects, for programs. You're not going to be able to get a grant, I don't think, for your operating expenses, which is what we're talking about here. Our operating budget, which runs around nineteen thousand dollars a year, is not going to get supported by any, any of your grant monies, I don't think.
I think I, I think I chose that, that, that. I guess I'm talking also foundations, you know, and like that as well?
I think it's, I think it's pretty much similar, I don't know.
Foundations usually have a lot of leeway, is, you know, if you find the right one, as to what they're, what project they're willing to get involved with, so, just tossing out all the options, sir.
Right, right.
I, I think we should kind of work on a round number here, and, and I've already, I've already, I've already talked, talked with Matthew about this idea that, that I think we should be thinking in terms of twenty-five thousand dollars, so that we have something round that we're moving forward with, again, in, 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 in the, in the interest of that we want to expand the operations, so that, you know, you get younger, you get a younger group of people that want to volunteer, and you get, and you get, you get young families that want to come in and, and be part of, and, you know, patronize a museum, so, that's my final comments.
Well, I think that, and do let me know if you disagree, but I think we all know that the museum is an important part of our city. And we're appreciative of everything that, that it does, and I think it's important for the museum to continue operation in our city. And the purpose of this meeting is to determine how we can, how we can make that happen. We've had a couple suggestions that, that have been come to light, whether it be the entertainment tax thing, or the specific vote just for that. Now, is it possible for the society to help partially fund it this year, if it came down to that? Okay, so as we're waiting, because no election, if we put this out to vote, I think the soonest would be with the, would be in August, would be an August thing, and that may be something that we work towards to getting it on. And then as a body here, we'll have to decide what it is that we're going to do with this, and what we're going to present. Just. Jim, go ahead.
Judge, just then, can I have the mic?
Absolutely. I'm, yeah, I'm all set. I don't have anything. I'm all set. Thank you.
I used to be able to get up easier, but I guess I'm getting older.[1691.73][1691.73](Laughter).
My name is Jim Nelson, I'm the current president and treasurer of the Historical Society. First got involved after I retired about eight or nine years ago, Mayor Laub, he's only a hundred, has to speak today and doing well. Kind of got me interested, my mother and mayor were real good friends, and so when I had time, I came back and volunteered, and of course, it's become a labor of love for me. I appreciate, obviously, all that's been done in the past, and I know times are tough going forward, but the society would like to work with how we shake this out. Ideally, the millage is a great idea, but of course, if it doesn't pass, then what is, you know, plan B? Having said all of that, society is in a position to, you know, we did the one year, put eighty-five hundred dollars in, either half from the DDA, so we are in a position to be able to help. The problem is, going forward, the account that we have is not going to stay the same amount of money forever, but it does earn some interest, and so consequently could be, you know, we could help that way with interest off that investment. The other thing we do is, you know, we do have, we do, we do charge dues. Tommy and I have talked about maybe raising the dues, you know, to get more support from a hundred and fifty, what do we have, a hundred and fifty members currently?
We need to get some new, younger members in.
No, that's, that's a whole other issue. No, that's, that's a whole other issue. But at the end of the day, uh, you know, there are some people I'm sure that might like to contribute. We are a 501(c)(3), and this is going to sound like it's all about me, but I have, uh, told the society that I will, uh, donate a thousand dollars a year to the funding for the museum, so maybe that cuts it down by a thousand dollars, and if we could get three or four more of those, it'd help even more. Uh, but, you know, for me, it's, it's a jewel in the city. Uh, Mrs. Laub kind of helped raise me, uh, beat me up at times, and she probably should have. And so, you know, I just, uh, I love it, I love the museum, and I want to continue to, uh, see it grow and go forward. And I like the idea about thinking five years outside and think, because things are going to go, you know, obviously the roof is going to need some care one of these years, and so we just like to get something kind of etched in stone so we don't have to every year come, come back in for money.
Well, the DDA's, uh, final budget is not done yet for the year, as the city's isn't either.
Right.
So I would suggest that we would meet with the, the pres, uh, the DDA. The president is here. I think that we can talk to Mr. Steele and arrange a meeting between you and, and Mr. Koppeler.
Okay.
And then work on a way to get this done.
Okay.
And have it presented to, to the mayor and council for the final determination of, of which way we're going to go, whether it is, um, temporary funding for this year as we go forward and, and put the millage out.
Mm-hmm.
And then go from there. Is that something you'd be willing to, to work on?
Certainly. I can't speak for the whole group, but, um, sounds wonderful to me.
Well, as president, right, I'm sure that the DDA would be willing to meet also, and that, uh, Mr. Koppeler's willing to meet, I know that.
Okay.
And, and I think we'll go over these, these different options, and, and then it'll come down to which way, which way we want to go. I mean, maybe there will be support for the, um, entertainment item, but then, again, that's not something where we're going out to the, to the public for their, for their opinions on it, for whether they want that or not.
Mm-hmm.
And in the end, it's going to be up to, up to them whether, to, uh, to keep this, this gem in operation.
Okay. Very good. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
What about the EDC? Could they, do you think they could produce a little bit of income for them?
No.
I know they bought a lot of things, signs and all that stuff. I mean, they're capturing tax money.
No, but that's not, that's for economic development. They're an economic development corporation. That's not for...
If the, if the museum closes, it's going to shut down a lot of things.
I understand that, but that doesn't fit in for, with the EDC. And it's not that they wouldn't love to do it, but I don't think that they, that they are allowed to. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak? Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Leslie Lynch Wilson. I just want to answer Chris's question about the foundation grants. Um, foundation grants are, you know, very hard to get. Um, they do require the 501(c)(3). They also require certified audit. Certified audits are, um, quite costly for small organizations, but, um, some, there, there are other options for the building itself, because the building's on the National Register of Historic Places. There's several different grants for the upkeep of the building. The National Trust for Historic Preservation has several grants that are offered like three times a year. They're very competitive grants, but for the roof, that could be an option. Um, also another program, um, through the National Park Service is the Certified Local Government Program. Um, a number of years ago, when Steve Duchesne was here, I sat down with Steve Duchesne. We brought somebody in from the State Historic Preservation Office to talk about it. Um, when a city is set up as a certified local government under the State Historic Preservation Office, then it opens, and it, um, opens your city up to federal funding for historic preservation. And since this building is on the National Register of Historic, um, Na- National Register of Historic Places, it means, um, they would, the city would be able to apply for federal grants to the State Historic Preservation Office for some of the upkeep of the museum. So I just want to mention those items. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else? Just wanted to say that we're appreciative of, of everything that the museum does, um, Jeff, all, all your work and the, the society and, and the commission. I know that it's a labor of love for, for all of you to, to do that, and there's countless hours and work that, that you guys, you guys do, and we, we do appreciate that. And we just want to, uh, make sure that, uh, it's there for the next hundred years, especially as we're coming into our hundred-year anniversary too, for the city. All right, then, anything else?
I'll move.
All right, quick call it off.
Counselperson Starginsky.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Kelsey.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Parkinson.
Yes.
Yes. Are you saying that we didn't need a motion, or do we?
Best. Every minute is precious, and when you have to hire a new employee, you can't afford to stop what you're doing. You need an efficient way to get to a short list of qualified candidates fast. That's why you need Indeed.com, used by over three million businesses. Daryl has hired with Indeed.
This site saves me a lot of time. It makes my job so much easier.
Post a job in minutes. Set up screener questions based on your job requirements. Then zero in on qualified candidates using our intuitive online dashboard.
I've used other websites in the past for hiring. Nothing has been this easy, this simple, and this effective.
And when you need to hire fast, accelerate your results with sponsored jobs by getting more exposure to relevant job seekers. New users can try for free at Indeed.com/offer. Your time is precious. Let Indeed help you get to your short list of qualified candidates. Get started today at Indeed.com/offer. Search for greatness. Search Indeed. Terms, conditions, and quality standards apply.
There he is, in the left lane, your secret, now maybe not so secret crush, Greg. Wait, are you wearing that scrunchie from spin class? It's okay, Karen, he's turned the other way, but just enough to see those baby blues. Wait, can he see you? Look away!
BP gasoline with Invigorate helps clean your engine, giving you more miles per take and more close calls per take. BP, every day brighter. Versus minimum detergent gas. Average story three to five miles per take with continuous use based on fleet testing and based on what you drive and how you drive.
Sal owns a pizzeria. He's also a DFCU Financial Business Banking member, so he earns cash back on all his business accounts.
Last year, I got seven hundred fifty bucks back on my business checking, twelve hundred back on my vehicle loan, and fifty-eight hundred back on my commercial mortgage. That's over seven thousand bucks in one year.
And for a guy who makes pizzas, that's a lot of...
Come on, don't say it.
Dough.
Ugh.
DFCU, the Cash Back Credit Union.
Welcome to DFCU Financial. How may I help you?
I'm thinking of opening... What's that?
That's our cash back counter upper. Here, you earn cash back on almost every account.
Oh, like on a credit card?
Yes, but also on a car loan, home equity loan, and mortgage. And that's every year.
Wow. Well, my thing doesn't do that. Sign me up.
DFCU Financial, the Cash Back Credit Union. Cash back is not guaranteed and will depend on DFCU's performance. Some restrictions apply. Please visit DFCUFinancial.com for details. Equal housing lender, federally insured by NCUA.
At Bob Evans, for the thirty-one days of March only, the Rise and Shine Breakfast is just $5.99. Yes, you heard that right. Two farm-fresh eggs, any way you like them, bacon or sausage, crispy potatoes, and two freshly baked biscuits, all house-made. Our most popular breakfast, only $5.99 during March. And speaking of March, you'll want to march right over to Bob Evans for your $5.99 breakfast. Rise and shine the Bob Evans way.
Rachel.
Yes, Blaine.
You need to know something. I'm not who you think I am.
Oh, wait, what? Of course you are. You're my hero.
No, listen to me. I'm not a hero. I'm not a cop.
What?
I'm a robot, 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 robot.
Oh, come on!
Yeah, this internet doesn't really work.
I know, right?
You need high speed for your movie thing, man.
I'm, I'm, I'm not a cop.
What?
I'm a robotics professor. I just wanted you to think I was cool.
Oh, Blaine.
It's Barry, actually. I'm a professor named Barry.
What?
Oh, I did not see that coming.
Switch to AT&amp;T and get high-speed internet with over ninety-nine percent reliability. Thirty dollars per month with a qualifying bundle and twelve-month agreement. No extra monthly fees. AT&amp;T, more for your thing, that's our thing. Prices for high-speed internet plans up to fifty megabits requires maintaining bundle of TV, home phone, or wireless on one bill. New approved residential customers only. Up to one hundred eighty-dollar early termination fee, up to ninety-nine-dollar installation or activation fee, and data overage charges apply. Reliability claim based on U-verse internet service. Geographic service restrictions and other conditions apply. See ATT.com/internet for details.
My number two does not look like a number two. I don't know what to call it. Is there a number three?
Table for four, please. Anything close to the restroom.
Ugh, a middle seat with these stomach problems? That's my fear of flying.
Sound like you? If it does, you could be one of the many people with a digestive condition called exocrine pancreatic insufficiency, or EPI. Even if you don't know what EPI is, you might know the symptoms: frequent diarrhea, gas, bloating, stomach pain. If you have even just one of these symptoms, you could still have EPI, because not everybody experiences EPI the same way, which is why it's so important to open up to your doctor about all your symptoms. And the good news is, EPI is manageable, so don't keep a lid on it. Go to IdentifyEPI.com, complete the symptom checker, and use it to have a conversation with your doctor. Don't keep a lid on it. Visit IdentifyEPI.com. Brought to you by Evvy.
This report is brought to you by Staples.
A fresh two inches of snow gonna fall overnight, gonna slow everything down tomorrow morning. Thirty-eight should be the high tomorrow.
Staples can help your business stand out with custom-printed signs, banners, and brochures. Now at Staples, get five dollars off your next print and marketing services purchase when you spend fifty dollars or more. Standout materials equals outstanding results. Offer in-store only, ends three-twenty-four. Exclusions apply. Staples.
Now, back to the eighties till now.
The eighties till now.
Detroit's one hundred point three, WNIC.
It's been a long day without you, my friend. And I'll tell you all about it when I see you again. We've come a long way from where we began. Oh, I'll tell you all about it when I see you again, when I see you again. Why'd you have to leave so soon? Why'd you have to go? Why'd you have to leave me when I needed you the most? 'Cause I don't really know how to tell you without feeling much worse. I know you're in a better place when terror's coming. Carry on. Give me all the strength I need to carry on. It's been a long day without you, my friend. And I'll tell you all about it when I see you again. We've come a long way from where we began. Oh, I'll tell you all about it when I see you again, when I see you again. How do I breathe without you? I'm feeling so cold. I'll be waiting right here for you till the day you're home. Carry on. Give me all the strength I need to carry on. So let the light guide your way, yeah. Hold every memory as you go. And every road you take will always lead you home. Oh, it's been a long day without you, my friend. And I'll tell you all about it when I see you again. We've come a long way from where we began. Oh, I'll tell you all about it when I see you again, when I see you again. Hey, it's Jay Towers in the morning with Allison and Chelsea. You know what? Our radio studio is right down the hall from the Fox Two news studio.
That means anything that happens in Detroit, we're gonna have it first.
So wake up with us every morning right here on one hundred point three, WNIC.
You should have been gone. No, and how I made you feel, and I should have been...
That's funny.
Haven't paid a dollar figure, something like that.
Hi, Vern.
Hi, how are ya? Where's my buddy? How you doing?
Everybody loves you, too.
Everybody loves Joe.
How could you spin one of those?
I have that information on, on here, but I usually won't.
It's a surprise to see you.
Surprise, very good.
I just should have been gone. Now I'm out, you're lying, it's not...
If I could have the camera, please?
Have the best show.
Evening, everyone. We will call the, the meeting of the Lincoln Park Mayor and City Council of March fifth, two thousand eighteen to order. We're going to lead off tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by the Order of the DMLA. So, gentlemen, if you would come forward, please. If everyone would please rise, because after the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll have the invocation by Father Tony Richter of Christ the Good Shepherd Church. So, gentlemen, one of you go to the podium, the rest, uh...
Like the way they volunteer.
Yeah, I like that. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We come together tonight in hope, and so we hear from Saint Paul's Letter to the Romans. Hope does not disappoint, because the love of God has been poured out into our hearts through the Holy Spirit, who has been given to us. Today, as we come together, we have great hope in our city. We have great hope also in our citizens. We ask God to protect all the first responders. We also ask Him to protect all of our citizens and to guide our meeting with His Holy Spirit. May the common good of all people of, of Lincoln Park also be at the hearts and the minds of all who attend our meeting tonight, and that all decisions will be made for the good of all the people of Lincoln Park. And we ask all of these things through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Father.
Thank you, Father.
If we could have roll call, please.
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We come together tonight in hope, and so we hear from St. Paul's Letter to the Romans. Hope does not disappoint because the love of God has been poured out into our hearts through the Holy Spirit, who has been given to us. Today, as we come together, we have great hope in our city. We have great hope also in our citizens. We ask God to protect all the first responders. We also ask Him to protect all of our citizens and to guide our meeting with His Holy Spirit. May the common good of all people of Lincoln Park also be at the hearts and the minds of all who attend our meeting tonight, and that all decisions will be made for the good of all the people of Lincoln Park. And we ask all of these things through Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you, Father. If we could have roll call, please.
Counselperson Darzinski?
Here.
Higgins?
Here.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns.
Here, yes. All right, under Mayor's comment, we just had the young man go back in and sit down. We're gonna call him back up again, but, well, they can remain there while I'm reading this, though. Whereas the Order of DMOA is a character-building organization of young men, thirteen to twenty-one years of age, who are seeking to become better citizens and leaders for tomorrow, and by developing those traits of character which have strengthened good men of all ages. And whereas the Order of DMOA has carried out the aforementioned goals throughout their programs of athletic competition, social activity, community service, and numerous charitable projects. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Thomas Carnes, along with the City Council and the citizens of Lincoln Park, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2018 as DMOA Month in Lincoln Park, and call upon our citizens to join us in saluting the young men of the Clifford C. Reeves Chapter Order of the DMOA. We express our deepest gratitude for their willingness to participate in aid in community activities, therefore setting fine examples of good character for our youth. And so if you'd please come forward to accept this.
They wanna take pictures. All of you come up here.
Yeah. Take a picture for the mayor and the council. There you go. You didn't mean to my- Congratulations. Yep. We have the leaders of tomorrow, ladies and gentlemen. Now would one of you gentlemen like to speak about what you guys are about? Or, um, just at the podium, so that the folks at home will have benefit of that.
The Order of DMOA is a youth group for young men between ages of twelve and twenty-one. We do a lot of act- fundraising activities, charity work. We help clean up the highway three times a year. October 27th, we are celebrating our seventy-fifth anniversary.
Congratulations. How often do you meet as a group?
About multiple times a month, around five-ish.
And how large is your, how large is your group?
International.
I'm at the Lincoln Park Chapter.
Lincoln Park, all right. We, there's us here, there's several who have not attended this evening.
And how does one become a member of the DMOA?
Get a petition and fill it out. Give it to one of the advisors or one of us, and we can give it to them.
Very good. Gentlemen, thank you so much for coming here today. Now, this week ago Saturday, we had the, I think, several members of the council and the councilman Kelsey was there, council president Murphy, and Chris Darzinski was at the Boost Mobile on H-66 Dix. They were celebrating their twentieth, twentieth year in operation at the same place. So that was a very nice event. That same day, I attended the, it was the, at Vibra Hospital, they had their health clinic there that was put on by, gotta think of who it was. Beaumont, I believe, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was Beaumont, and then the organization, it was the preachers that are trying to put that wellness clinic in the thing, so yeah, Beaumont.
Not well attended by a lot of people there, but a lot of great information. Got, found out what my HDL level was and several other things. But that, it's fifty-two, matter of fact. St. Michael's had something that same day, that Saturday, and it involved Know Your Rights, which was hosted a workshop for immigrant and refugee neighbors. So they had several speakers that were there. I was there to listen to that and the different things that we can do to help those that may find themselves in that situation. So that was a very good presentation with that also. Today, we are privileged to have Sue Pinson, or yeah, Sue, there she is, from the Turning Point Clubhouse. Now Turning Point, for those that don't know, is at, well, it's 1605 Ford Street. It's the old security bank building. Now the Turning Point, Sue has worked tirelessly in support of attempting to get clubhouse status for this organization. For the past three years, I think she has worked on that, and I don't, probably stealing some of your thunder and talking to it, but just a few months ago, they were awarded that. So it was, but I thought that appropriate to have Sue come and just tell a little bit about what goes on there. Sue?
Hi, I'm Sue Pinson, as you said. I'm the director of a Turning Point Clubhouse, and we were recently accredited. We're an international clubhouse now. Lincoln Park now has the official one in the area. There's not one in Southgate or anywhere else close by, so we're reaching out to Wayne County residents that are involved with mental health, that have some type of a mental health diagnosis. They have to have active Medicaid, and they have to have services within one of the mental health providers. The people that we serve are, we have about thirty-seven people a day coming in now. A lot of people live here in Lincoln Park, a lot of them live in the surrounding suburbs, and they come in and they do what we call a Work Order Day. Our Work Order Day consists of, they run a snack shop and a business unit, and they run a food and social unit. They prepare meals each day. They do all the shopping, all the food prep, and they have different activities throughout the day as well. We're doing computer classes, they're teaching Spanish and French. We're doing Serve Safe. So there's many things for people to do if they want to come and attend. We're also working with Lansing on a bill of $298, and that's to provide, we're trying to get extra dollars for people who no longer have Medicaid, so they can continue to attend Turning Point. We used to have people who had Medicare and private insurance, and now without the general fund, those people are no longer able to attend. So we reach out to people at different mental health providers and do presentations as well, trying to get them to allow people from their agencies to come to Turning Point. It's a great place for people to come and be. They can spend the day, they can come one to five days. We do social interaction, we do community inclusion, they plan overnight trips places. So we're very busy, staying very active with all the other clubhouses in Michigan. Once a month, we talk with all the other clubhouses. There's about forty of them here in Michigan. There's about three hundred and fifty-seven of them all over the world. So it's a great place to be, we're learning a lot, and the members are real proud of what they do. They run and take care of their clubhouse. The staff works side by side with them just to help them and assist them in anything that they need. In order for us to keep our accreditation, there's things we have to do. Right now, we're looking at transitional employment. Our agency has provided two jobs. They're janitorial jobs, it allows members to go back to work for six to nine months, and it's considered a sheltered workshop, so it doesn't have any penalties where there's social security. So it's part-time, and we're looking for two more jobs in the community. If anybody knows of any janitorial work, or dishwashing, or anything like that, as well as looking for additional advisory board members. So I brought some pamphlets and some cards and some information, and the members do an awesome newsletter you can find on Community Care Services website as well. So I can leave these with you, and if anybody's interested, there's some advisory board flyers here as well.
Very good. Now, the part with the employment, there's something that I liked with that, that if they do end up hiring somebody that is a member of your program, you guarantee that somebody will show up to work, isn't that correct?
We train them, we transport them, we pick them up from work, so it's really an easy transition back into employment, and they do that job for six to nine months, and we train the next person for you. If they miss a day of work, one of the employees will show up to cover them, so you have no misemployment.
So it's a great opportunity. And anyone interested or looking to have somebody fill that position-
And we have two successful people right now, ready to transition from the job that they're in.
But they would contact you at Turning Point?
Turning Point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And I saw that our Gona Varga, our county commissioner, just came in. Iona, do you have something you wish to share with us today?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I just wanted to come and say hello. I had a nice meeting today with the city manager, and we're trying to figure out how to spend our parks monies that Wayne County is bringing to Lincoln Park as we normally do. So because we have three communities that I serve, I usually take turns, and we spent quite a bit of money in Malvendale for the last couple of years, so Lincoln Park is gonna get a good chunk between this year and next year. We'll be able to spend about a hundred thousand here in Lincoln Park. So I guess that's worth crowing about, and that's a good one. And so we spent about four hundred thousand by the Riverside Park on that side, so now we're moving to other parks to try to do some good things. So I don't want to do anything in a vacuum, so that's why I met with the city manager today, so we can put our heads together and see where. But I would like to put some lighting at Quan Park, so the Little League could play at night. That's in the works, and possibly put some tracks down. There's some cement work where people could go to the, we'll see, but maybe people could strollers and in some areas of the park, and also since we have a handicapped person who is doing the coaching, it would be easier for him to do it as well. So there's a lot in play. I'm trying to talk really quick, so I don't take much of your time, but I'll be around, and we'll discuss it individually too, because I want to hear your wishes too, as mayor and city council members.
Well, thank you. The meeting that we had prior to this one this evening was about our historical museum?
Yes.
So if you know of any county funds available for support of historical museums, that would, we'd appreciate that input.
Unfortunately, there is none from the county. The reason that we're getting the parks monies in the first place is because we all pay into the Parks Village, and part of that percentage comes back to our community. And so really, the share of what Malvendale and Lincoln Park puts in is about, our share coming back would be about thirty-four thousand. But because I've done a lot of work in southwest Detroit on bringing other kinds of grants into there, I'm able to bring the rest of the amount to the $250,000 each year, which for the last year and this year. So I wanted to wait till we had a good chunk to actually do something with, as opposed to just penny-pinching and doing smaller projects, so. But I'm sorry, there is none there. I'll look around and see if there's any grants out there, but I'm not very optimistic about that.
Don't hurt to ask, though.
Does not hurt to ask. I wish I did.
Okay, thanks.
If I see anything, it definitely will come here. Thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight. Now with that, I think we'll move on to the consent agenda. Resolve that the following items listed on the consent agenda be approved as presented to the mayor and city council. One, approved minutes for our meeting held February 20, 2018. Two, solicit bids/painting/KMB Room A. Three, solicit bids/water leak detection survey. Four, renew DPS land lease with E and J tree. Five, schedule study session for DUO. Six, attend training/policeman Alice. And seven, attend training/policeman Cypress School, Cypress Instructor School.
Support. I have to, I can't vote on the approved minutes, I wasn't here, but I can vote on the rest of it. So I have to abstain from the first item, number one.
Okay. Very good. Any other discussion? Just, I know that the Alice program is one that helps officers train for the potential or if there was to be an active shooter in any of our schools, so. With that, we will have, call the roll, please.
Counselperson Murphy?
Yes.
Darzinski?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns.
Yes.
All right, action items. First item has a cover letter from Green Christian Director of the Office of Community Plan and Development, and it's to set a required public hearing to discuss the five-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan. In the background, creative landscape architects and planners were awarded the bid to prepare the five-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan. They require that a public hearing be held prior to the submission of the plan. The preliminary plan will be submitted on April 1, 2018, for MDNR's review and comments. The public hearing was supposed to be advertised in local newspaper and was not, so we now have to hold a second public hearing and advertise it in the paper. So, resolve that a public hearing be set for March 19, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the John A. LSC Council Chambers, 1355 Southfield Road, Lincoln Park, Michigan, during the course of the regular council meeting to discuss the proposed five-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion? Court call the roll.
Counselperson Kelsey?
Yes.
Yes.
Darzinski?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns.
Yes.
Next item has a cover letter from Fire Chief Steve Martin. The mayor and council gave permission to solicit bids for the purchase of three new thermal imaging cameras with AFG grants on January 3, 2018. After bids were collected, West Shore Fire Incorporated was the sole bidder submitting a bid. So it is resolved that West Shore Fire Incorporated be awarded the bid for the purchase of three new Bullard NXT thermal imaging cameras at a cost not to exceed $32,205, ninety percent of which will be paid with awarded AFG funds. Required 10% cost share funds, which is $3,220.50, to come from fire department account number 101-340-757.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion? Court call the roll.
Counselperson Kelsey?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Darzinski?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns.
Yes. Next item also has a cover letter from Chief Martin. Mayor and council gave permission to solicit bids for the purchase of a new vehicle exhaust system on January 3. After bids were collected, two vendors provided bids. Hastings Air Energy Incorporated, a cost of $45,400, for high-movement exhaust system and Clean Air Concepts, at a cost of $35,892.59 for the magnet grip exhaust system that also came with an optional hose upgrade for an additional $11,296. for the magnet grip exhaust system that also came with the optional hose upgrade for an additional eleven thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and four cents. Although Hastings Air Energy Controls Incorporated came in with a higher bid, they were the only vendor who met all of the bid specifications. The two specifications that were not met by Clean Air Concepts were, one, a safety malfunction disconnect handle shall completely separate the lower nozzle section from the upper hose assembly. Reducing the possibility of damage to the vehicle if nozzle fails to release. And two, attachment to the vehicle shall be made in any direction of the nozzle will not require mandatory attachment point. Mandatory attachment points make it more difficult to attach, causing the operator to stand in the hazardous environment longer than necessary. And so then, resolve that Hastings Air Energy Control Incorporated be awarded the bid for the removal of the existing exhaust removal system and replace it with the ply mouth exhaust removal system for costs not to exceed forty-five thousand, four hundred dollars as they are the bidder that meets all fire department specifications. Ninety percent of total cost will come from awarded AFG grant funding. The remaining ten percent cost shares funds, four thousand, five hundred and forty dollars to come from fire department account number one zero one dash three four zero dash seven five seven. So moved.
Support.
Discussion. Court call the roll.
Councilperson Kelsey?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Darzinski?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns?
Yes.
Next item has a cover letter from Doreen Christian, Director of the Office of Community Planning and Development. And in background, the mayor and council authorized Hennessy Engineers to refer design engineering specifications with bid documents and solicit bids on September five, two thousand seventeen for a insulated roof for the senior center. Two, two companies came for the mandatory walkthrough and both submitted bids. Insulated roofing contractors at seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and Oak Ridge Foam and Coating at one hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred dollars. So, we have resolved that insulated roofing contractors of New Albany, Indiana be awarded the contract for the CDBG two thousand seventeen, eighteen senior center roof renovations in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, ninety-four dollars and seventy cents, which includes a ten percent contingency as they are the lowest bidder that meets all specifications. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute documents necessary to accomplish this work. Funds to come from account number two four nine four three dash seven five five two zero one, senior center renovations. So moved.
Support.
Discussion. And court call the roll, please.
Councilperson Higgins?
Yay.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Darzinski?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns?
Yes.
Okay, the next item has a cover letter. I believe it's from Doreen again? Oh, no, it's from John Kazoo, Director of Public Service Engineering. There it is. Hennessy Engineers Incorporated, on behalf of the city of Lincoln Park DPS solicited bids for the two thousand eighteen Kennedy Memorial Building Roof Renovations. The city of Lincoln Park received two bids for the project with the low bidder being insulated roof, roofing contractors of New Albany, Indiana with a bid amount of sixty-two thousand, two eighty-seven plus a ten percent contingency amount for sixty-eight thousand, five one, one five. So, have information from, from Hennessy Engineers. As you were, the city of Lincoln Park opened bids on Wednesday, February seventh for the above Russian project received bids from two of the two contractors that picked up contract documents. Our office has reviewed the two bids received in insulated roofing contractors of New Albany, Indiana is the lowest bidder with a bid of sixty-two thousand, two eighty-seven to complete the work under this contract. Contract proposes renovation to the existing barrel roof of the Kennedy Memorial Building. Insulated roofing contractors are very capable of completing the work and have completed numerous roofing renovation projects administered through our office for other nearby communities. So, the second quote on this was from the Oak Ridge Foam and Coating at a cost of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. So, resolve that the mayor and city council hereby award the bid for the two thousand eighteen Kennedy Memorial Building Roof Renovations to insulated roofing contractors of New Albany, Indiana for a total cost not to exceed sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy cents to come from capital account four one zero dash zero zero one dash nine eight three zero zero zero. Be it resolved that mayor and city council authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign all pertinent contract documents. So moved.
Support.
Question, Your Honor.
Discussion. So, go ahead.
I wanted to ask Mr. Kazoo, the low bid is one-third of the price of the other bid. Can you tell me what the difference is and why one would be sixty-two and the other would be two hundred and twenty-eight?
I don't have a good answer for you. I really don't. The low red contractor, I've talked to them and they're confident that they know what's involved. They can do it. And as far as the other contractor, I can only speculate. Maybe they've got too much work. They didn't need the job that badly. I truly don't know. Because if it were a few thousand dollars, then I'd say that was a very good tight bid. But they're so, so far between the two numbers. Exactly. I can't give you a good answer.
If I could add, when we, when we put money in the budget for these projects, at the time, we were thinking that the cost to do the roofs was, was going to be somewhere in the ten to twelve dollar range. We bid out the police roof project in advance of these. I think that came right in at ten dollars a square foot. Which is still over our budget. And so, we had to actually use money from the, the, the account for the KMB roof. At that point in time, John started working with Hennessy Engineer to look at different ways to go about this, to try to bring it in under our budget. So, we wouldn't have to appropriate any, any more money. And so, what they came up with is actually a little bit different than what we normally would do. This normally would have a rubber membrane on it. But if you have been in my office recently, you'll see this foam looking stuff that's sitting on my desk. And actually, that's what they're going to be putting down.
Correct.
And when we, when we did the estimate on it, it came in at six dollars a square foot. And I think actually, this is a little bit less than what the estimate was. So, in terms of the, the cost, the low bid came in pretty close to what we expected the cost to be. You know, as Mr. Kazoo has said, why the other company bids so high, there could be a number of different reasons for it. But this company that is the low bid and is being recommended by Hennessy is a company that's done and used this project and installed this in other, other sites. So, we have a pretty good comfort level that they'll be able to do it for the price they're saying.
I don't, I don't doubt the credentials of the company that gave us a low bid. It's just that I'm wondering, you know, is one, we're buying a Yugo and the other, we're buying a Cadillac?
They actually have bid on the same product, which makes it so. I don't even know a proper word. Why the difference would be so, I'm going to say, large? I don't know. But they bid on the same product. Installing the same type roof. And one came in at the lower end and one came in at extremely higher end.
As long as you're comfortable that they're confident and credible.
The work will be bonded. That way, if they have problems, we'll go back to the bonding company. But they have done successful work for Hennessy Engineering prior to this work, or this bid, I should say.
And this was the anticipated cost of?
Yes, it was.
Your Honor, through the chair? Yes, sir, go ahead. Um, we know they've done this kind of work with this material in other places. Can you tell me where they've done work with that material?
No.
Does Hennessy recommend it?
Actually, no, I don't. I don't know what other locations that they've done it. Because Hennessy put together the bid package, took the, they were in receipt of the bids and they're the ones that are going to administer it. No, I don't. I can't give you any other examples.
What location is the, the headquarters for Hennessy?
And.
They, they did it for this particular.
And it.
I don't remember if, if they also did the Superdome or just the product was used on the Superdome? But I can't remember.
Actually, you know, now that you bring that up, after the hurricane, they put that same product because it is a BASF product. They put it back on the, on the dome in Louisiana, I mean, New Orleans.
I just don't remember that part of the conversation. But the product has been used in a number of different areas. And one that we're going to be looking at using for other roofs as well, just because of the, the, not only the fact that it's less costly than a rubber membrane, but also it, you know, it's going to provide a long-lasting product for us.
Okay. I just was unfamiliar with the product.
Yeah. It's relatively new. I mean, it's again, Katrina was back with two thousand and six. So, it's been in the last ten years.
Further discussion? Court call the roll.
Councilperson Kelsey?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Darzinski?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns?
Yes.
Next item also has a cover letter from our DPS Director, Mr. Kazoo. Entry stairs to City Hall Building have been in fair, fail state and must be repaired, replaced. Hennessy Engineers Incorporated is the city of Lincoln Park's current contracted engineering firm. Has put together proposal to create a structural design drawing specification for these stairs. As part of their proposal, they will review the structural integrity and the soil conditions of the existing stairs and use this information to complete bid drawings and specifications to replace the existing stairs and tie them back to the existing landing and, and ramps, ramp. Whereas Hennessy Engineers Incorporated is the city's current engineering firm. Be resolved that the mayor and city council authorize Hennessy Engineers Incorporated to create structural design drawings and specification for the entry stairs to City Hall Building for a total cost not to exceed two thousand, four hundred dollars to come from capital account four one zero dash zero zero one dash nine eight three zero zero zero. So moved.
Support.
Question, Your Honor?
Yes.
Or more or less a, a comment. You know, we, before this meeting, we had the study session with the Historical Society, Historical Commission. And they were basically just trying to stay solvent by picking up a few thousand dollars here and there. Twenty-four hundred dollars seems totally exorbitant to me for a set of stairs. You know, if, if Mario was here, I think we probably could have had him do it for a hundred. I, I just think that to spend that much money for design is, is just way off the ballpark.
According to their contract, you know, this, these are the rates to get that project done.
Couldn't, couldn't we get a sign with, with an arrow on it pointing to the main interest, City Hall and, and save that money?
Yeah. I mean, that, that's, I mean, that's where we're really at is.
Twenty-four hundred dollars, just not for the work, for a drawing. I'm sorry, I can't buy that.
We're so required to have the handicap access though, so. Yeah, and that's where the elevator is. Okay, further discussion? Court call the roll, please.
Councilperson Kelsey?
Yes.
Darzinski?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Murphy?
No.
Parkinson?
No.
And Mayor Kearns?
Yes.
Next item has a cover letter from our city manager, Matthew Kopler. And it has to do with the purchase of radios for Citizen Patrol Watch. What I missed? I think I put that in a different location. Talk amongst yourselves for a minute. No, I, I have it. I just put it in a different spot. Oh, this item has been moved by Councilman Parkinson and supported by Councilman Kelsey. Whereas the city of Lincoln Park experienced a significant snow event beginning February nine, two thousand eighteen and lasting through February eleven, two thousand eighteen. That deposited over ten inches of snow on our city streets. Whereas the men and women of the Lincoln Park Department of Public Service worked countless hours clearing the city street and fixing water leaks and addressing the concerns of residents caused by significant snowfall. And therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council recognize the efforts of the men and women of the Lincoln Park Department of Public Services during this significant snow event and extend to each of the city's sincere appreciation for all they did to make these streets safe during this time. Oh, yes, yes. With that, we have discussion?
I'd like to say something. During that time, not only were they doing the snow, but they also had, I think, a water main leak and they also had some other issues going on. So, for the small crew of fifteen or less people we got, I think that was quite extraordinary. That's one of the reasons I think this resolution was put forward. Because people don't realize, they just weren't plowing snow at that time. Water main breaks don't pick and choose when they happen. They happen. And, and I think it's nice that we recognize, you know, the men and women that work in that department for all the work they do, especially during the situation we had, which was bad, a bad weather situation. Thank you.
Now, we're very fortunate to have the, the men and women that, to, that, that rose to the occasion. Yes, sir, go ahead.
It's also the bitter cold that we had. Me, doing the roads properly impossible, but salt doesn't work when you're down that low. So, a lot of these people would say, they didn't do any good. They weren't plowed down the street well. When the salt started working, the sun came out, they, they were cleared. So, the bitter cold was also a bad problem.
It was quite a deal. That's all I know. Court call the roll, please.
Councilperson Parkinson?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Darzinski?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Yes. And we do, all of us have a severe sincere thank you for our DPS Director and all of the, the work that his crew did for us during that time. Now, we'll come to the, wave the bid for the purchase of radios for Citizen Patrol Watch. And Mr. Kopler reports, it was identified during the review of the emergency management plan that Citizen Patrol Watch, CPW, are using radios that do not provide complete coverage of the city and which cannot communicate with members of the city's public safety department. To rectify this shortcoming in the emergency response efforts, the attached resolution will allow the city to purchase an initial allotment of radios for CPW off the state of Michigan's cooperative purchase bid list. These radios will also be utilized by the citizen emergency response team. Partial funding for the radios was put in place by mayor and council at the meeting when the community development block grant funds were reallocated for this purpose. The necessary remaining funds will come from CDBG account for crime awareness. Now, whereas the city wishes to purchase radios for use by the Lincoln Park Citizen Patrol Watch to replace outdated radios that do not provide interoperability with the public safety departments. And whereas the funds are available within the community development block grant program, crime awareness budget to purchase these radios. And whereas the radios to be purchased are available through the state of Michigan Extended Purchasing Program that leverages the buying power of the state for local governments to benefit directly from the reduced cost of goods and services and indirectly eliminated the need, the time needed to process bids. Now, therefore be resolved that the mayor and council authorize Chief of Police Raymond Waters to honor the state bidding process and purchase nineteen handheld and one base unit with related accessories and required programming for Motorola Solutions Incorporated for a price not to exceed fifty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifteen cents. With funding coming from the money set aside in the city's CDBG crime awareness budget. So moved.
Support.
Discussion.
I got a question through the chair, I guess. You know, we set money aside, the council does, after the Community Improvement Commission makes their recommendations. We get it for the CDBG money. And I'm just wondering why there wasn't a, a line item for radios. We're taking money away from the actual budget for the, that's coming to the crime awareness individuals and programs to buy radios. And I honor, I'm not arguing about the issue. I'm arguing about how we're doing the issue, I guess. And I, because it, when it comes to the council, we're told that it's for the issue of crime awareness. Okay? And if they needed radios and all that, then I think that was another issue that maybe should have come to the council through our budget or whatever. I'm just seeing it as a point of information because that's the way it comes to me. That's the way I understand it when I get it. And so, I would just say that, you know, I have no problem with this, but I'd like to see, I mean, if you take the money away, what are they going to do? I mean, they got twenty-five hundred left, but they asked for seventy, they asked for more than seventy-five hundred, rightfully so. We only allocate seventy-five hundred. And if they don't use it, why do we give them seventy-five hundred dollars? I mean, I'm not, again, I'm not arguing about the radios, but I think I'm arguing about the process. And that's what I need to understand is that, you know, was there a different way we could have done this and still maintain the money in the, in the crime awareness program? Or was this something that was done, I see we took some money and I wasn't here and I apologize, but I but I went to training on the February 20th, when there was discussion about moving to 44,000. What happened to that program that we, we turned around, and I wasn't here? I, I guess what I'm saying is, where is the process that we put money in for a specific issue, and then it's supposed to be used for that, because we allocated that way when we do with the rest of the organizations? And maybe that's not a discussion for here, but that's just my concern. But I moved on it, so I don't have a problem with it, I'm just questioning the process.
Well, the, the money that was transferred at the last meeting, uh, came from money that wasn't used as part of, uh, the, uh, the code enforcement, I believe. Um, and so we went through the process, we're supposed to, we came to council. Um, council agreed to transfer that money that hadn't been used for the code enforcement. As it relates to the, the additional, so that was the 44,000 we did at the last meeting. Representatives from the, the Citizens Patrol Watch wanted to purchase additional radios. They found that money and felt that that money could be used to do this instead of what they were going to do. I know, I see representatives out there, so if, if you like, they could address their thinking on that. But again, they, they made a choices, we all do with, uh, a limited amount of dollars, you know, prioritize one thing over the other.
Yeah, I don't, I'm a problem, like I say, I'm just questioning when it comes to us, that's how it's presented, that's, that's all. And I understand things change, and if they, if they needed radios, which I know they did, because I was there, we needed radios. I'm not arguing that issue, I'm just arguing about the fact that when we allocate the money, and I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but we allocate it based upon, they need that to operate that particular function, whether it's paper clips, or buying something, or whatever. And that's why I asked the question. And I guess you answered the first part, the 44,000, because again, I apologize, I wasn't here. But that's what I was just curious about, that, that from now on, if we need stuff like this through the CDBG, that we put that as an allocation or as a figure there, so that we can vote on it when we turn around and, 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 I, you know, have a better understanding where the money's going. And I mean, I'm not saying that's good or bad, because you're right, the gentlemen, uh, have the ability to do that. But somebody comes to us and asks for that money, that's, that's the only thing that bothers me. I'm not, and again, I, I guess I'm arguing against myself, but I just find it hard to believe that we just didn't make the, give them the money and find the money to buy the radios someplace or whatever. And I'll, end the discussion, I, I, you explain to me what you explained to me.
Your Honor. Yes, sir. Oh, I was just gonna ask Matt, uh, are we not able to set up, uh, like a sinking fund for different entities? We're talking about the Historical Society and the possible need for some roof repairs. From budget to budget, can't we have a sinking fund that's set up to do that type of thing, which would probably be in line with what you're talking about, Larry?
Yeah, thank you, that's, I'm sorry. Yeah, I think, you know, under, under the best of circumstances, that what you, that's what you should be doing. Um, you know, unfortunately, the city hasn't had the wherewithal to start doing that. It's definitely something that we're going to be looking at and doing. I mean, as we put the, uh, the capital plan together, you know, the concept of, of funding in advance is one that we're definitely going to be focusing on. Again, though, it's, it, you know, you have to build the financial wherewithal to be able to do that. Unfortunately, for the last few years, we just haven't been able to do that, but that is what our goal is. So I'd much rather deal with it in small chunks than big chunks.
Yeah, I think, through the chair also, I think they, they need more radios. So I hope next time we go and finish the, the allotment, we do it the other way. I mean, not that it, you know, just so we can still keep the money in, so they can still do the crime awareness programs they do in the medians and the officers' time, and so on and so forth, that's all.
Yeah, this, this is only a portion of what we've identified the need is.
Yeah, there's more out there than, thank you.
You know, on, on the city side, there's also city radios we need to purchase as well. So that's going to be, hopefully be able to work into our upcoming budget.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, further discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
Counselperson Kelsey?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Garzinski?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns.
Yes. Next item has a cover letter from our DPS director, Mr. Kazoo. This is authorization for execution of a change order for Lincoln Pump Station for additional expenditure of $60,000 for unforeseen pump issues. This Lincoln Park, this Lincoln Pump Station bid was just awarded by mayor and city council after the contractor removed the pump and took it to the repair facility. They found the pump required more extensive work than was initially inclusive in the base bid. These repairs were thought of when we requested a 20% contingency factor in the contract award, but we never anticipated the pump to be in this poor of condition. And there is a, a listing of the, of the, what is required of, of the pump that is quite extensive. So, "Resolved that mayor and city council hereby grant the DPS director authorization to execute and sign change order number one in the amount of $60,000 to Northern Pump and Well Incorporated and bring their contract total to date up to $135,688.80. The additional $60,000 to come from account number 420-001-983000, Water and Sewer Capital." So moved.
Support.
Discussion on this? Hearing none, clerk call the roll.
Counselperson Kelsey?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns.
Yes. Next item has a, a cover letter from our city manager. And has to do with the, the RAP program, or Water Residential Assistance Program offered by Great Lakes Water Authority. City had been approached by Wayne Metropolitan Community Action Agency, asked the city to enroll in the Great Lakes Water Authority Water Residential Assistance Program. This program helps low-interest resident, low-income residents who access bill payment assistance, learn and implement water conservation measures, and navigate resources, and wraparound supports on a pathway towards self-sufficiency. By enrolling in this program and selecting option two, the city of Lincoln Park will be helping low-income residents take advantage of these specific benefits. Payment assistance up to $300 per household, home water audit, home repairs up to $1,000 to fix minor plumbing issues, water-saving kits and training classes, and supportive wraparound services. The city's responsibility will be to respond to questions regarding the program, stop pending shut-offs once resident is enrolled in the program, waive penalties for RAP participation, and provide access to enrollee's past customer billing history. And the city still has the right under option two to place unpaid water bills on the taxes of delinquent property owners. And it has specifications of who can enroll in the, the program. So whereas the Great Lakes Water Authority, GLWA, offers a Water Residential Assistance Program, RAP, to help low-income residents in particular, in participating cities, to access bill assistance, learn water conservation measures, and navigate resources, and support towards a pathway of self-sufficiency. And whereas the Wayne Metropolitan Community Action Agency is the agency authorized by GLWA to administer the RAP for Lincoln Park, it requires a memorandum of agreement to be executed for enrollment. And whereas it is the desire of the mayor and council to enroll in the RAP, so low-income residents may take advantage of the service offered through this program. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council approve the memorandum of agreement for the RAP with the Wayne Metropolitan Community Action Agency, and authorize enrollment of the city into the RAP specifically option two. And be it further resolved that the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign this memorandum agreement on behalf of the city of Lincoln Park. So moved.
Support.
Question, Your Honor.
Session, go ahead.
What is this going to cost us as a city?
Yeah, that's what. So the, the primary, I think, loss that the city would see is any of the penalties that are associated with a, uh, account that goes into this program. Again, that, that's going to be hard to estimate, because we don't know how people are going to go into the program to say that, that, that's in it, but Lisa somewhere. What, what do you think, just on a, a average delinquent bill, the penalties, penalties would be? Two, three percent? Oh, 10%?
In the bill itself?
Well, the bill itself, uh, so the two things that would happen, one is that they do provide money to help pay for the past due amount. But the city would still be able, if, you know, that didn't account for the whole past due amount, we'd be able to put that on the taxes. So in theory, we'd be able to see, under this program, all the money that the principal is due. We'd just be losing that attention on that 10% of whatever was assessed.
Who's going to provide the money for the bills that they can't afford to pay?
Well, the, through this program, which we're already, as a community, paying money into this program. So the money would be provided through Wayne Metro from Great Lakes Water Authority to the residents that enroll within the program.
You know, I, I said this before, and I, I don't want to be harsh, but we keep inviting people to live in Lincoln Park who can't afford to live here. I would like to live in Beverly Hills, but I can't afford to live in Beverly Hills, so I don't live there. We keep bringing assistance programs, uh, to the city, we provide halfway houses, we have pawn shops, we have thrift stores, we have a number of things, just to bring in people who really can't afford to live in Lincoln Park, and then we wonder why we can't pay our bills here. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not for this.
This has the ability to help people in need. And people that are already here, and it may help to get them to the point where they're able to pay for their water bills in the, in the future. If, uh, come in and have some, some counseling with that. But, see, here, there. Uh, further discussion?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Through the chair, if I may. I understand that they're going to monitor it and send some kind, according to the paperwork you give us, and they're going to give us some kind of report. What happens if this thing goes south, where this thing starts to become more of a burden than a benefit to everybody? Is there an escape clause, or a, a resolution, or a 30, you know, 30-day notice or something? Are we stuck in this forever and ever?
No, within, within the agreement.
Okay, I didn't get that far.
Put aside here, uh, there is a, uh, there is an out clause. And again, if, if the, the individual that's enrolled does not live up to what the commitment is, then, you know, we have the ability to go back and, and do the whole assessment, they, they owe us everything.
So we have, "This agreement shall be in effect from month, day, year, until either party agrees to terminate within, with 30 days' written notice. Should either party issue a notice of termination, both parties agree that residents enrolled in RAP prior and up to the date of written notice will continue to receive RAP assistance until the first 12 months of residential enrollment is completed or resident termination."
Thank you, Your Honor, I didn't, I see, okay. The other, like, question I got is, which a follow-up, is that, are they, you know, if, if they give us a report, who in the city gets a report and reports out to the council or to the finance or the city manager to understand where we're at as, as far as how these, it's a new program for us, and, and obviously for them, those who are going to use it. But how do we, I guess, who's going to monitor it that doesn't have 10 jobs in the city right now that's going to monitor this program? And I'm just, because they do, I mean, I'm just asking how we're gonna, who's gonna do it, I guess?
Yeah, you know, the, the last time that we talked about this, their, their reporting, so they being Wayne Metro and Great Lakes Wa, uh, Water Authority, their reporting requirements were a lot more onerous for us. And I think at this point now, all we have to do is, um, if I remember correctly, there's a form that we have to fill out and check that they're still making their payments. So it's, so it's not as onerous as before, where there were, there were a lot of reports that we had to provide. Um, we just have to now verify that the individuals making the payments is the agreement promises.
Okay, and that's going to be done by who?
That'll be done within our water office.
Okay, so the water office will take that responsibility, have to do that, and then that is going to be a, a, a lot less paperwork, but somebody will be watching it, sort of, or giving a report to you, or the finance, or somebody that, you know, as we go down this program, because it is a new program.
Yeah.
To see how it's working, and to see what the, the, I guess glitches are, or how it's working. Okay, and as long as we got somebody watching the program and making sure it's going.
And, and you know, I, I, I think that, that just, when you, when you look at what the requirements are to meet the program, i- it's going to help some people within the city. I, I don't think that, you know, it would be something that we're going to be looking at a lot of people taking advantage of it. It could be wrong, but it just doesn't appear that, that, you know, we're going to have a lot of people taking advantage of it. The, I guess the positive side with this, and, and I don't think I alluded to it, or maybe I did allude to it, in the financial impact to the city. You know, there, there is a value of receiving money today versus waiting potentially three years. And, you know, when we went through all the foreclosures, you know, there were a number of, of properties that had not paid any water, and we had to wait until actually went through the foreclosure to get that money. That, that's a loss to us, it's, it's an increase in cost of, of, uh, the operations, because not everybody's paying what they should be paying. So we either had to not do the things that we should have done, or, you know, we paid money that we never received, you know, to Great Lakes Water for, Authority that we never received from the customer. So effectively, everybody was paying for those delinquencies at that point in time. So the theory behind this being that if they get into this program and they are keeping current, you know, we're, you know, we don't receive the, the negative of having to wait three years for it to go through foreclosure to get that money. So I, I think there, there, there's a value to this that, that does, you know, improve our, our operations because we're getting the money today. Again, I, I'm, I'm not thinking there's going to be a lot of people that, that actually qualify for this and will take advantage of it, but there could be some people that, that, you know, will take advantage of it, and because of that, you know, they're not going to be put in peril because they can't meet their, their other obligations.
Your Honor. Well, and one circumstance that brought this to light was a, a citizen who, who called who recently lost her, her job and was hit with, um, overwhelming, I guess, uh, two series of, of water payments. And had she had this, this program, it would have eased and, and helped her, her through that. That's what causes to be looked at. So then, just one second, sir, just go over the eligibility guidelines that I neglected to do earlier. And income eligibility at 150% of FPL or below, based on a three-month lookback from the date of application. Bill must be in client or tenant's name, address must match the ID, proof of home, homeownership, if renter, lease must indicate tenant responsible for water, must have income source, account holder must attend appointment, shut-off notice is not required. Bill does not have to be passed due in order to, uh, take part. And for bill plan assistance, client participation, and other educational trainings that mandatory, and subsidized housing participants are eligible for assistance. Sir?
My, my only comment, Your Honor, and it goes with Councilman Kelsey's, on who's going to do the work here. I hope it's different people than the ones that were in charge of the Honeywell lawsuit that cost us over a million dollars, because they didn't do their due diligence.
Further discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Yep.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
This would pertain to a lot of our senior citizens also?
If anyone, if they qualify under the guidelines that the, was just written.
I think the senior should be notified of this, so they can, uh, get advantage of it.
All right, further discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Counselperson Garzinski?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Murphy?
No.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns.
Yes.
Have this one, I'm very excited. Okay, next item that we have was, was added just miscellaneous. But, "Whereas the city of Lincoln Park Sanitary Sewer System has experienced a failure resulting in a collapse of a pipe, resulting in the system being inundated with stormwater causing an emergency situation. Whereas this failure places at-risk private and public property and increases the cost of operation of the system because of the excessive pumping of the stormwater and the unnecessary treatment of the stormwater. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor, that the mayor, city council authorize the emergency expenditure of funds from Water and Sewing Fund to fix the sanitary sewer failure in amount not to exceed $100,000, coming from account number 592-527-818000, Contractual Services. And be it further resolved that RJ&amp;J Enterprises is authorized to make this repair under the terms and conditions of the contract for services with the city of Lincoln Park." So moved.
Support.
Discussion?
Uh, did you, I'm sorry, yeah, I was gonna say, you have John explaining what we're talking about.
I don't know if any of you, uh, I'm assuming all of you received that picture that the city manager sent around. That was actually a 24-inch pipe collapsed, that had collapsed underneath the Sex and Kill Fall drain. And what was happening there was resultant of the collapsed pipe underneath the.
And what was happening there was resultant of the collapsed pipe underneath the drain, the drain was emptying in to our sanitary system. From there, it went to the Emmett Street Pump Station, then over to our retention basin. So, what we had to do, we had to eliminate the excessive pumping for the Emmett Street Pump Station and the retention basin, so we had to fix that twenty-four inch water main, excuse me, sanitary sewer underneath Sexton Kilfoyle Drain. While doing that today, we also checked out further down in the pipe, and we found an additional sixty feet, sixty lineal feet of twenty-four inch pipe that has collapsed. So, we're in the process of making those repairs tomorrow. And if we don't, this pipe is beyond being lined, that's why we have to do what they call a punt repair. After the punt repair is completed, and now that we have completed the portion underneath the Sexton Kilfoyle Drain, my recommendation is to go back and line that pipe. So, right now, at the cost that we're at, I'm hoping that it doesn't exceed one hundred thousand dollars, but I'm at approximately seventy-seven thousand right now trying to crack this pipe. Does anybody have any questions?
Just a comment, John, you might tell, and we've been looking for this leak for a long time, through there, to find out where the water's been coming from.
Well, it's been quite a lengthy process. We've known that we've got a large volume, it, vol- volume of inbound water, but we could not locate where it was coming from. Last Friday, I was in the building department, having this discussion with the building department, and a citizen came in and said, "Oh, I think I just saw a sinkhole underneath the creek." Well, you know how ridiculous that sounds? I went over there right away, and that gentleman described it perfectly. And coincidentally, myself and two, well, Jim, uh, two, two of the engineers from Hennessy Engineering, we were probably, we were just on the opposite side of Dix. So, we're within seventy yards of this location, and I would've never dreamt that it would've been where it was. And, uh, the following day, we had the, uh, the rain that turned into the snow, that heavy snow we just had, and overnight, the water level came up in the creek where you couldn't even see the sinkhole. You barely, barely, barely saw any type of ripple in the water over top of the sinkhole. So, I'm thankful that the water level was so low at the time. Number two, I was thankful that a citizen recognized what he thought he recognized. And number three, that a citizen actually pedaled his bike over here to City Hall to report it in the building department, because it still would've taken us a little while longer to try to determine where that inflow, or that ginormous inflow of stormwater was coming from. I'm trying to track him down. Because I, I'd like to give him some sort of recognition for what he has helped us, helped us with.
Save us several thousand dollars. This is not something that we can not repair, correct?
No, we, we have to repair it. There's no way, no ifs, ands, or buts, it has to be repaired, and it has to be done immediately. Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have further discussion on this? Court call the roll, please?
Counselperson Kelsey?
Yes.
Jarzinski?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns?
Yes. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Oh, we're getting the vacuuming done. Okay. Next item is resolved that accounts and claims payable for those items greater than twenty-five thousand dollars be approved as follows. Twenty-Fifth District Court, March two thousand eighteen payment, forty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars. Hennessy Engineers Incorporated, various projects through January twenty-five, two thousand eighteen, sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and sixteen cents. MERS, February two thousand seventeen defined benefit, three hundred and three thousand one hundred and three dollars and ninety-eight cents. Safe-Built, November two thousand seventeen, building and service, services, final payment, fifty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-two cents.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion?
Yes, uh, I don't have any issue with the rest of it, but the Safe-Built final payment, we've been having some trouble when the building department was, uh, aren't these Safe-Built, they were supposed to do, understand certain things, and then we got in there with the new building department, we found out some of those things weren't done, so, you know, I don't agree with paying them the final payment, the whole money, without somebody taking a look at whether they're responsible for some of the stuff they didn't do, uh, that they should've done underneath there, that now we have to do because they didn't do it, yet we're paying them. And that's just the way I feel about it. I mean, I, I might be a little bit more than what I'm saying, but I know that, talking to John and some other people, that there was a lot of things that was assumed to be done, and it didn't quite get it. And I don't like paying for stuff that we assume or we require, and we're not getting it, so I'm, I'm not voting for that one, I'll vote for the, the rest of them, but I'll exclude myself from that one.
I have similar, um, issues with that. Okay. Mr. Copley, you want to comment on that, or will you comment on that?
Or will he comment?
Two comment. I guess, I mean, if, if council has concerns about that, I would suggest you take that off, and we have the city attorney review their contract and some of the issues, and make a determination what, if anything, could be done.
Okay.
You'd have to have a motion to remove that.
Yeah, I moved that we do that.
I second that.
Oh, sorry.
All right.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
I think Mike did, right?
Mr. Parkinson?
Er, I'm sorry.
Uh, Parkinson.
The final payment. Is there a discussion on the motion?
On the amendment.
On the amendment to the, so we're voting on the amendment first, right? All right.
So, go ahead.
Counselperson Parkinson?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Jarzinski?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns?
Yes.
Okay, now we can go back to the...
So, now we're looking to vote on the original resolution as amended. So, is there further discussion on that? So...
So, court call the roll?
Councilman Kelsey?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Jarzinski?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns?
Yes.
So, that is that, then we move into the city manager's report. Mr. Copley?
Good evening. Thank you very much. I have a number of lengthy issues for you tonight, so we'll get right into this. You might remember, a few months ago, you would've received a packet, I believe I emailed out, or maybe you actually received copies, I can't remember how we delivered it, on a request from MLB Properties LLC. Do you recall this? I also placed at your desk a quick reminder of some of the information, the letter from MLB Property LLC, and what their request is. So, they, they own a, a property located at fifteen-twenty Southfield, so it's not too far from where we're, we're sitting here right now. And on there is a old sign that, I think it's, it was for their...
Awards collision.
There you go. They are requesting that they have the ability to retrofit that and make it a digital informational sign. Where this is an issue, kind of cutting right down to it, is our zoning code doesn't allow that to occur. And so, in speaking with them, I'd said that, you know, you need to make a request to council, have council discuss, and see if there is a desire to change the code to allow something like this in that particular district. So, there are representatives from the company here, if you have any specific questions, but if you have the desire to do that, we would have to put together a, a resolution to amend the ordinance to allow that to happen.
Your Honor. Question through the chair to Matt. We have our sign here. And there's another sign on Ford Street, probably several signs on Ford Street. Why is there prohibition on this sign?
I, I can't speak to exactly how the cities came about. That was before my time, so I don't know exactly what that process was. But, my guess is that there was some exemption for a municipal sign to do that, be my guess, how it was allowed.
The apartments, the apartments on Ford Street also have a sign like that.
Yeah, and, and again, I, you know, if, if that went in under another code before it was changed, again, I, I can't really answer that. Just know, and looking at what's there today, you know, our code prohibits that from going in. That, that doesn't, you know, mean that it's not a good idea to do this or not, I'm just saying that as we sit here today, we fundamentally don't have the ability to approve it, even if it was a good idea, so we'd have to amend that code to allow that.
Well, that's my follow-up question. What would be the reasons that we wouldn't want to allow something like that?
I don't see a one, but... Yeah, well, you know, I...
I mean, we're trying to get business in Lincoln Park.
Well, I think, I'm sorry. Well, I've, so, I, I guess, the, the reason against it, and, would be what other places, you know, why they prohibit the signs. And I think it's, it's awkward for us to try to prohibit something that we do, but, you know, municipalities do have that ability to do those things.
And we've done it several times.
And we've done that, right. But I think, you know, the, the cause against it would be that, you know, it distracts drivers, it clutters the city skyline, I mean, that's what other communities have used. Again, you know, I, I think in terms of distraction to drivers, you can find plenty of studies that, that state one thing or the other, depending upon, you know, what, what is paying for that study to be done. So, I, I don't know necessarily if there is a, a, a benefit, or not a benefit, to having those signs, if they distract or not. You know, I think what it generally comes down to, and, and, you know, this community has already made some decisions, you know, made decisions, and also things have happened without the city's decision. I mean, if you think about what the, the school did with their sign.
And Emergency Manager did with...
So, right, I mean, there's a lot of issues there. I, I, so I think, you know, it's, it's hard to come up with a good reason not to do it, but I think, you know, in the end, you are the ones that make that decision, what the city should look like, and you do that by, you know, amending or allow, you know, amending the code that says, "This is what we believe our communities should look like."
Well, you had an existing sign there already.
Yeah.
A billboard. Think the digital one would look far better than what's existing there.
Definitely.
Well, I, I'd like, through the chair, if I could, from what I understand, Senator and Planning Commission, this issue was brought up as a side issue before, and the Planning Commission, before I got on there, they mentioned to me that the original sign is illegal to begin with, as far as the size and that. And I don't know if it is or isn't, I'm just saying, so I would suggest, before the council get into this, that we refer this to something like a zoning or planning commission, i- if that's the product of the council, because you have other organizations out there that have come to the Planning Commission, asking to get their signs, especially on Dix, there's a, Adams Pharmacy is complaining that they don't, what I'm saying is, you do one for you do for all. I mean, that's just, and, and the reason I'm getting that is that you need to have, I think, somebody needs to take a look at this more, what happened to, why was the original one allowed to be there when it should've been? Because the city allowed that somehow, against the ordinance, the original sign. And then the fact of it is, is how we go about making the, if you're gonna modify the sign ordinance, we do it so it's fair for everybody, so we don't get everybody coming up here like the man I just mentioned, who's come numerous times. I know he's contacted me and a few other of us that went to the DDA when we did the grand opening and all that stuff. That's just my recommendation. I don't know where the jurisdiction stands, whether that does have to go, or doesn't have to go, but that's just some of the things I need to, we, we need to be aware of.
Your Honor. Hold on. I think that this item has been being worked on for some three, four years, if I'm, if I'm accurate, if I'm accurate on that. And has been worked through, because it predates the time for Safe-Built, because it was Mr. Shigash, wasn't it? It was the former building? And it was discussions with him at that, that particular point. Now, the awards collision sign, to my knowledge, has been there for at least forty-five years. And it may predate the, um, the sign ordinance in and of itself.
Yeah, maybe a grandfathered in.
So, I don't think at, at this particular point, it's not fair for them to start over on this either. They need to find out, because it's gonna come down to a decision of council anyway at this point. So, it's either put up or, or shut up, so we need to make a decision whether we're going to allow this at this particular time, or, and then we treat the other ones on a case-by-case basis when they come forward. Here, we have an existing sign, they're looking to, whether it was considered to be legal or not, I don't know, it, it's there. And the digital one would look far better than what the, the old one is.
And, and what I, yeah, what I'd recommend, it was whispered in my ear by the city attorney, which I think is a very good idea. If, if council is interested in doing this, we would ask the city attorney to put together kind of the, what, what it would look like. I think, you know, where zone, you know, planning zoning gets involved in this, I think is, is kind of building out the, the entirety, because, you know, there are some zones where certain signs are legal, and there's other zones where that same sign isn't legal, you know, like an A-frame sign, I think is a good example, where in some, some zoning districts you can have it, some zoning districts you can't. So, there is an element of, of, I think, planning commission to look at the overall development of the city and say, you know, "We think this is good in a municipal business district, but it may not be good in this other district," taking into account a lot of different things, like, you know, maybe a neighborhood district or something like that. So, I think that, that, you know, first having the, the city attorney prepare what would be a good guideline for that, and working maybe with our planning consultant as well.
And what, uh, length of time do we anticipate for this?
I, I think we'd be back within a month easily to do that. Would you agree I'm not putting...
Nearby have adopted the electronic sign for certain districts with a limitation of certain pixels and certain areas of, of light, light factors in the positioning of the sign. Secondly, the sign itself there is a lawful, non-conforming use, and I'm not entirely certain that the continued use of that sign or changes just left in the purview of the planning and zoning department. It's a council, you could either look at it as an ordinance for signs and usage of signs, or a zoning and planning issue. So, there's a multitude of issues. I think it'd be best to come back with some recommendations, see if council wants to move forward, and it can be zone-specific, area-specific, or existing structure-specific.
So, was that for the March twenty-first meeting? Is that...
Well, you know, we'll talk to Mrs. Higgins, she's the brains of the operation.
Ed, come on, you're here!
Well, that would be our target today.
That's right. And I, I've just texted her, because we underwent the same change for Southgate about two years ago, and they've done a comprehensive sign.
First reading of the ordinance, is that what you're saying, probably, for the...
Yeah. And unwelcome ideas, somebody has something you want to send, but let's keep it simple, all right?
But I think the starting point for this is with the council, because, I mean, again, if you're not on board with doing this, it's irrelevant what the Planning Commission wants to do.
I'm just, the only comment I got of this, it's been kicking around for a long time, why it never came to the council? I mean, that's a side issue, but I'm conf- you know, that's why I suggested getting all the parties involved, because it seems like things get left out, if either by somebody not doing it, and I like, it's, I like to get a lawyer's opinion, because you know what? It saves everybody a lot of, of grief when we get on, down the road a little bit, so I don't have any problem with that.
Councilman, the right thing to say there is, is they were in the right church, but they were in the wrong team at the time.
Okay.
They brought it before the wrong city body, part of site plan approval, it was kicked around for years and years and years. I'm well acquainted with this.
Okay.
But the original awards sign is still standing.
Yeah.
Irrespective of what matter council or any other body has taken in the past, if you're gonna permit a sign and make modifications, bring the sign ordinance into the twenty-first century, or just have a bunch of old signs.
As long as we do it the right way, I don't have any problem.
Your Honor, through the chair?
Yes, sir.
I have two issues with this. One, in, in the past time when we've approved or looked at large electronic signs, we've asked the police department to look at it, and to give us their, um, idea of, of safety and not safety, and we've done that on several signs on Ford Street and on Southfield, and I think it would be appropriate to ask them at this. Secondly, um, our sign, um, ordinances are willfully not up to date, and that is something that this council really does need to look at.
Sounds good. Okay, then, moving on? Do you mean a motion for that?
I, I agree with, uh...[1772.51]
I agree with, all right, I agree with the city attorney. We've had problems before about the brightness of those signs. One in seventy-five, it was shining the people's, the neighborhood's houses. And the one at Secot and Fort Street, that one was too bright. It was distracting drivers. So I do agree, we have to keep the brightness of them down.
Okay, we will work on that, see if we can get it back to the nineteenth, twenty-first, unless you're having a special.
Oh, I was looking, I was looking at Wednesdays, for some reason.
I didn't know if we were having more meetings here. Okay, so there's that. You may recall, I sent out, I believe, two weeks ago, from DUA, they are having tours of the wastewater treatment plant in Wyandotte. There's one Saturday, March tenth, at nine AM, and the other is Tuesday, March thirteenth, at nine AM. I know a few of you have written back to me. I'm going to have to say, get your place in line, very shortly, I think, within the next two days. So I don't know if anybody else is interested. Like I said, I think three of you have responded back to me, and I will get that in. But if there is any other, anybody else, let me know, so I can reserve a spot for you. Soon, like, in the next day. Not tonight, but tomorrow. Let's say tomorrow. Let's do tomorrow. Let's see. Wanted to bring a little bit more update. I think at the last meeting, I may have spoken about the fine that we received from IOSHA related to not having the asbestos assessment for this building, as well as not having a hazard communication plan for employees. That fine originally was fifty-six hundred. They accepted our plea to reduce that, so it's only going to be twenty-eight hundred. And I think you actually seen it in the payables for this week. The other piece of that is actually bringing us into compliance. We did have our environmental technical consultant come in. They did a review last week, I believe it was. We'll be getting that report shortly. And we've started on the draft for the hazard communication plan. I've requested that we get time, I think, to the end of April to actually have it in place. They wanted it next week. But they told me that we should be able to get that extension. So I'm waiting to actually hear back from them. Kind of nervous they haven't responded back to me. But we should be able to bring this into compliance pretty shortly. Fortunately, the cost on the assessment was a lot less than what I was anticipating. I think it ended up being twenty-eight hundred dollars. So that's pretty good.
Through the chair, is this just for this building, or for all?
Just for this building.
We have to do all the other buildings? I mean, just asking. Maybe I shouldn't ask.
Well, I think it's appropriate and proper to, you know, do that assessment of any building that we have that has that. We are not being told by IOSHA to do that right now. So we are going to put money aside within the budget to bring us, yeah, within compliance.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So two court-related matters I wanted to bring to your attention. The first one is the bad news. There is within, I believe, the governor's budget, the thought of helping to pay for, get this, the Michigan Engine Defense Commission's plan. Yes, the one that we were told that the state would be paying for. They, the governor and his budget had put a proposed seven dollar and twenty-five cent per capita fee that communities have to pay to fund this. Just, any guesses how much that is? Just on a conservative number, about two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand?
Yeah.
A year? Yep. So, you know, as you speak to our legislators, please let them know that, that, you know, when you make a promise that you're going to pay for something, you should keep up with that.
Unfunded mandate.
But, so we don't know how that's going to end up, but it is out there. And actually, we'll send you a copy of the information I had on that, so you can, you know, show that I've done my part, and have brought that to attention of our representative. But I'm sure your talking to them will be even more important. And the last thing I had related to the court is working with state treasury. They had identified a grant that would help pay for some of the soft costs associated with a potential court police facility. It's the, I can't remember what it stands for, but it's C-GAP is what the acronym is for it. Fund about three-point-seven million dollars of projects per year. So I put in for some of the soft costs, which would be the original analysis to show whether this makes sense to do, plus what it would be we would do if we did this, and find different ways to fund it as well. And then the other one would be the architectural design, engineering design of that. So we'll see what happens with it. I think they were very excited about the project. So hopefully, that will translate into funding of the project as well. But I guess the good news, the bad news is they want it to come through the city of Lincoln Park. You can take your pick whether that's the good news or the bad news, because we're doing all the work on that. So, but we'll see what happens, and hopefully, that will save, you know, our residents' money related to costs for a new court facility, if that's ultimately the direction we go. And I know, I keep getting questions from department directors. You probably have this, we have not received notice yet for the treasury's financially distressed cities, villages, and township grants yet. Normally, by this time, it's already been put out there. For whatever reason, they're not putting it out there yet. So as soon as I get notice that we've been funded, because I think we will get funded, on that one, you will know. Thank you, sir, if you have any questions.
I got a question.
Yes, go ahead.
We put a resolution to talk about the, okay, I know you probably forgot. You know what I'm talking about.
Yes, yes. And you know what? I didn't grab the copy of that to put it out there, because I was working on this one, unfortunately. But would it be okay if we did that? Because I'd feel a lot better if I actually had the copy of that. I apologize.
I don't have a problem with it.
Yep.
Oh, that was too heavy.
Okay, anything else from council for the city manager? Hearing none. We will move on to our department head report. Today, it is finance director, Lisa Greves. Lisa?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do I need to do anything on my end? Press the button again?
Excuse me.
Okay, because I have it up on the screen, so. My presentation.
You're I T man.
Unfortunately, I can't blame anybody else on that one.
They have the IT room.
Yeah, that's true. Should give him some plugs and some remotes.
Yeah.
So he can do that.
Remote control.
So he can take over the lab.
Mic shut off if it goes too far.
Should have had a training session first. Now I have to get it back there. Hang on one second. There we go. Okay, good evening again. Tonight, I want to start the presentation by talking a little bit about the current status of where we're at today. So for the general fund budget, the two thousand seventeen, eighteen fiscal year, recently, you adopted the amended budget for the year at twenty-three million, six thirty-five, nine sixty-eight, as of today, which we're just about three-quarters of the way through the fiscal year. So we're fast approaching that June thirtieth date again. Seems to come faster every year to me. We are at about seventeen million in collection of revenues. And for property taxes, that accounts for about ten million of that seventeen. And we have spent about sixteen-point-nine million in expenditures to date. So just, I wanted to kind of break down where that revenue is coming from. I know we've talked about it in the past, but just to kind of put it out there again, forty-seven percent of our revenue comes from property taxes. So that's, of course, our largest revenue source. So when our taxable value took that decline over the years, that's why it hit us so hard. Another large thing that we depend on is the revenue sharing from the state of Michigan. That's nineteen percent of our budget. So that's our second largest source in the general fund. And of course, as the state had reduced those funds coming to the city, it was very crucial to our budget. So, and then, third is the district court. Luckily, the last several years, they've been doing fairly well with the revenue, and that's really been beneficial. And so they're seventeen percent. And of all of our other sources, which are all those little miscellaneous things, any grants, permits, all of those things, that's, that accounts for seventeen percent. So that's why you can see all those things combined make seventeen percent, why that revenue sharing from the state is so crucial to our budget. On the next slide, this is just kind of another breakdown of the revenue, just to show where we are at today. Property taxes, we've collected about ninety percent this year. Revenue sharing, we've got fifty-three percent. They distribute it to that, to us every few months. So we are, right now, at about fifty-three percent. Other revenue is fifty-nine percent. District court, we've collected fifty-six percent of that revenue. Licenses and permits, which is, includes any permits issued through the clerk's office, as well as the building department, we've collected about sixty-one percent of those. So now we'll talk a little bit about where we spend our money. And of course, public safety is one of our most valuable resources. So of course, we spend, makes sense that we spend the most money there. So police and fire combined accounts for ten-point-five million of our twenty-three million dollar budget. So they're just about half of the budget goes there. The court, that's a little bit skewed, because we pay certain expenses, and then we bill back to the other communities, E. Corso Rouge. So right now, the district court's only showing, really, that's truly through, like, maybe October. The building department, we've spent four-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars there. Buildings and grounds, which pays for all of the building maintenance for the city buildings, electric heat, as well as any repairs to the roof, all of those types of things, three-hundred-and-eighty thousand. Community center, one-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, and any other expenditure, which includes all of the administration for the city, any of those clerical functions, and those things kind of behind the scenes you don't always think about, account for four-point-seven million. This slide here will show the fund balance. You know, we always talk about fund balance. We've got a new policy in place. Our goal is to have twenty percent fund balance put away. So that's kind of, some refer to it as the rainy day fund, but really, that's kind of that cushion there, that if anything drastic happens, we can rely upon. And just to show you where we've come from back in two thousand fourteen, which of course is when we had the emergency manager brought in, we had a deficit situation of seven-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars. If you fast-forward to the end of two thousand seventeen, we've built that fund balance back up to three-point-nine million dollars. So we are, we're getting closer to that twenty percent, but this really shows a true picture of how far we've come in such a short period of time. It's not to say that things are rosy and getting much better, because we still have our challenges that we face. Of course, pension costs, you know, just all of those legacy costs that are out there, that we just don't know, two years from now, what, what kind of effect that's going to have on our budget. We are estimating, in the amended budget, to stay the same at the three-point-nine. I think ultimately, we will do better than that. But a conservative number would be to stay at the three-point-nine. To talk about some of the other funding that comes into the city, our major and local funds. So those are the Act fifty-one funds that come from the state of Michigan, mainly through your gas tax that you pay. So those funds are distributed back to the city based on the mileage of Lincoln Park. They come to us, and we have, those funds are restricted, so we can only use those for designated items. And we have to file a report each year with the state and prove that we are spending those in the proper way. In two thousand seventeen, eighteen, we anticipate receiving point, four-point-five million in road funds. And again, these are restricted for maintenance, repairs, and reconstruction of roads. This year, we have budgeted about three-point-two million dollars to reconstruct city roads. And the remaining funds out of the major and local funds go towards things like buying, buying the salt for the roads, putting that salt out, materials to fix potholes. I know that's a popular subject right now. Street signs, equipment maintenance, and of course, the wages for those employees that work in that fund. The water and sewer fund, just a quick overview of that, the budget for this year is at twelve-point-four million dollars. And the expenditures are just a little bit over the anticipated revenues. And to date, we've collected six million dol, I'm sorry, six million dollars and spent six-point-six million dollars. To move on to next year's budget, we have, had all of the departments have submitted their budget requests for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and meetings with all of the departments have been held. So we've gone over all of those requests with them at this point. The proposed budget will be submitted to mayor and council, March nineteenth. And then meetings with mayor and council, as well as the public hearing for the budget, will be held between April and May of this year. And the budget will hopefully be adopted by mayor and council on June fourth. Moving on to the operations of the finance department, just to kind of give you an overview of what we're, what we're doing in the department. Since July first, we've processed one thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight purchase orders, and processed three thousand eighty-eight accounts payable vendor checks totaling twenty-seven-point-seven million dollars across all of the funds. We've processed three thousand six-hundred-and-sixty employee payroll and payroll vendor checks. And from those, three thousand one-hundred-and-forty-nine were processes direct deposit. So the direct deposit helps the city save on the fees that the bank charges to process checks. And then further, on that, we have gone to, as many of you probably receive, electronic pay stubs, so that saves us the cost of printing and the paper for them. So that's a nice, a nice benefit to that. In the water office, we've, we've processed forty-two thousand, just over forty-two thousand water bills to date, since the beginning of the fiscal year. And then we've continued our collection notices throughout the winter to help residents get caught up on their water bills. Since December, we've sent out one thousand three-hundred-and-sixty-one notices. So those are kind of the off-cycle notices from what we were doing in the past. And this helps residents get into a payment plan now to avoid getting a potential shut-off letter in the next couple of months. And we will also be sending out our two thousand eighteen transfer-to-tax letters. So any of those accounts that were, that are still past due and haven't entered in some type of payment plan, will be received notices. They have a certain date they have to pay that by, or the funds, or the account would be transferred to the summer tax bill. And by trying to continue on this collection process, keeping it up to date, and, you know, trying to work with the residents to, of course, make it, make it easier for them to pay the money. Sometimes they may have a leak or something going on. So we do try to work with them to get them into payment plans. And that will have the RAP program wrapped into that. And, but it kind of helps us keep the cash coming into the water and sewer fund, because of you, as you've heard tonight, there's many expenditures occurring and things that have to be dealt with. So we need that cash continually coming in. So if we don't keep up on the collection, the bills go past due, they may transfer to taxes, and then we could, in some cases, be waiting years to get that money back in. And then the last thing I want to talk about is we're in the final steps with our bank, Bank of America, and getting the ACH direct payment set up for water accounts. I think I talked about this a couple of months back. So we are planning to offer this program beginning April first. We have just a couple more little setup items, and then we're going to send out, we want to get notices on the water bills, get it on the cable, the website, just to let everybody know, there's going to be forms you have to fill out. This is a good benefit to the residents and to us. It helps, helps us have less mail to process on a daily basis. And of course, it saves them on the postage and the potential to maybe forget mailing the water bill and then get that late fee. There will be no fee to the residents for this service. And then I also want to remind everybody to sign up for electronic water bills, so you can get your, your water bills emailed to you quarterly, or those few monthly accounts that we have. And that's a nice benefit as well. You don't have to worry about it getting lost in the mail. So, and that is all I have. If there's any questions.
Are you looking for the ACH payments for taxes, too?
In talking with the treasurer, we're going to, we're going to kind of roll it out with the water bills first, and get everything working smoothly. And then, I don't know if it would be in time for this year's tax bills, maybe the winter bill. But we are talking about that in the future. But we're going to start with the water.
Pay with the debit card or whatever that was costing, like, three percent?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And this way, it'll just electronically come out on the due date. You'll still get a notice that your, what your water account is. It'll tell you when it's going to be debited from your account. And, but you don't have to mail in the check.
Through the chair.
Or pay the fee.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yep. Either Lisa or Matthew, with the new website that's going to be rolled out, and the ACH payments, it's also going to be interactive on the website?
Yes.
You can pay it on, do it on their phone, like all the youngsters.
The form? The form, the form or pay it on their phone.
Pay it on, they can use their phone.
Believe, they can do that already, but there's that credit card fee. So you can go on the website and pay your water bill currently. But this will allow us to automatically withdraw that every, every due date. So, and luckily with the water bills, you know, it's a pretty consistent due date for everybody, so they know every three months they'll have, but we'll send the notices out. It'll say on such, such and such date, your, your water bill will be withdrawn from your account. And then we go in and take it out and credit their account.
So hopefully, two thousand and nineteen done for ACH payments for taxes.
Yes, well, yeah, that's the hope.
Cool.
Yep.
Coming, coming soon.
Yes.
Anything else, Councilwoman Lisa? Thank you. I have to commend you. They're getting the reports to where now you can read it from, from right here, so that wasn't always the case, so appreciate that. It'll help for the people at home too, that are reviewing this. With that, we will move on to Citizens Communications.
My name is Adushane, and I live in Lincoln Park. And I seen our local Down River Paper, so that so far, four people in Lincoln Park are running for the vacancy on our City Council. This vacancy got me thinking. I have lived in Lincoln Park for over sixty years, and I can't remember an election like the last council election, when all the candidates who ran for the City Council got elected, and we still have a vacancy on the City Council. That got me thinking. If a voter in Lincoln Park back then and had registered as a write-in candidate and voted for him or herself, that one vote would have gotten that person on the City Council and saved the taxpayers around twenty-five thousand dollars, the cost of an election. If I am wrong in my thinking, I'm sure someone will connect, correct the air. Some months ago, a citizen complained that the City Council Agenda is not broadcasted on the LPTV. To remedy that, a picture of the City Council Agenda was shown. The trouble with that is you can't read it because the printing is too small. Anything that should be put on the, should be seen so that you can read it. If people can't read it, it is useless. And don't forget to bring your scrap paper to the bins on Cleofus behind the library. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Clifford E. Rich, it's great to be back after battling a nasty bout with that flu that's going around. Chief Ray Waters was here just a little bit ago, but he's gone now. I wanted to say a sincere thank you heartfelt to Lincoln Park Police Department and Fire Department. About a week, week and a half ago, the city of Wyandotte lost one of its honorable heroes, J. Dean Sharps, a longtime resident. He grew up with me since we were five years old, became a police officer in Wyandotte in his hometown, followed in his father's footsteps, and lost his battle with leukemia. And it was very nice to see Wyandotte and Lincoln Park and all the other communities, especially ours in Lincoln Park. It was dear to me to see our police and fire involved in the procession, standing as the honor guard at the funeral home. That was very nice, so I really want to send out a sincere heartfelt thank you to Lincoln Park Police and Fire for that. From home, watching the council meetings on TV, I saw something where they were talking about planting trees on Electric Street and doing proposed projects that would be greening up, trying to make Lincoln Park look a little bit more attractive. And it got me to thinking that, you know, I think what we need to do is start looking at some different options as to making ourselves look attractive. One thing is, if anyone has noticed now, they've torn down the stores over there at Sears Plaza. Now, I'd like to know if we're going to stay on and find out what their proposed action is once they clear the debris and the rubble away. Are they going to build something new there? Are they going to leave it as a barren wasteland with water sitting there piling up? Or is it going to be turned into something that's going to attract businesses into Lincoln Park for development? And I think another thing we can look into also is green initiatives, because you see, we've got lights out here and council chambers here. I think we need to look into getting into alternative lighting and heating and cooling sources. Look out to get some of that grant money, so that we can put these alternative purposes that are green to use to save money. Because that money won in five years with green lighting and alternatives, we can recoup that, save money, that can go back into the general fund, and we can use that towards other projects in the city. And I think too, we need to start looking at the financials and the economics of the city more than just the landscaping. You know, like how we're going to save more money, how we can use these alternative resources and grant money to improve the looks of the city, fix the side streets and the roads, get these potholes fixed when we can, get volunteers if we can in the city to help out with initiatives like that. Because right now, I think planting trees, we've got enough trees right now growing up through the wires that we can't even take care of. And I think we need to focus on, you know, revamping buildings, getting on these plazas, and looking towards, like I said, the financials and finding out what's going to happen. The D M O A, the younger generation that's coming up, you know, they're a great initiative, what they said, cleaning up the freeway and stuff and cleaning up the city. We need to start thinking about this, because we don't want Lincoln Park being absorbed into other cities or communities. We want to be financially soluble, so that we can keep the state's hands off of our finances, out of our council and out of our government, so that we have a Lincoln Park we're proud of, full of mom and pop businesses that these younger generations can appreciate, respect, and they can continue the legacy where we leave off, once we pass on and leave them a great precipice of a city known as Lincoln Park. Thank you.
Sean Stansberry, good evening, everybody. On May eighth coming up, the city has a special election for City Council. I hope that all the registered voters of Lincoln Park will come out to exercise their right. As a city, we need some fresh faces and ideas. Every member on the council today has done an exceptional job for the city, and I want to thank everybody. You guys done, everybody's done a great job. We, as a community, control everything, and our future looks promising. I have a question for Matt. The courthouse and the Police Department, do we have a location yet, or?
No, sir.
No? Okay, all right, okay. I have, last thing I wanted to say is, Wyandotte Animal Shelter in Wyandotte on Grove is an awesome place to adopt a cat or a dog. So if anybody wants to go out and get an animal, it's a great place to go. They've got some real good people there. And they do a real exceptional job with finding people that are right for the animal. I just went, I lost an animal last month, and I went and adopted one from there, so. Go down and see Anita and the crew down there, and give a stray a loving and forever home. And I know Councilman Parkinson lost his dog last year, last summer, so maybe he'll think about getting another one soon, so we'll see. But that's all I have tonight. Thanks.
Anyone else? Saying none, we'll move to the oral reports of the council. Council President Murphy.
Thank you, Your Honor. As Cliff mentioned, we're moving ahead with our progress over at Sears Shopping Center. The buildings over there who have been, they've been dilapidated, they've been running down, and now they're coming down. And it's a good thing for the city, because not having those there is going to make us look a lot better. And the new progress that we're having with the new development there, we're not aware of what that development is yet. They haven't graced us with that knowledge yet. But it's got to be better than the empty junk buildings that we've had sitting over there. So I thank, thank them for moving along on that. It's going to make things look a lot better. As the mayor mentioned earlier, we invested our time in a building in the, a company that has been with Lincoln Park for over twenty years, Boost Cell Phones over here on Outer Drive and Dick's. Those people have a little operation over there, but they're really struggling to make a go of it in the twenty years. And so I hope if you get a chance, you can stop by and say hello. I know we still have a parking problem over there, which, you know, the council members and I talked about. There's, there's not a lot of parking in that area, but we need to do something that's going to set a parking standard where you can only park there for an hour at a time. That way, business can move around. You know, in a cellphone type of business, you have customers that will come in to get maybe some batteries, maybe a, a quick cellphone or a case or something like that. They're in and out in fifteen, twenty minutes. We have other people in that area that, actually workers that park there for hours at a time in a, in a surface area of about five or six cars. So I'm hopeful that we can do something and help these people out. They've twenty years in our city. We need people like that to stay in our city and not move away because they don't have parking. Mayor, we, we had prepared a, a business and residential award for Jack's business, and I don't think we presented them with that. We had to cancel it. Are we still going to come up and present them with an award?
It was either that or I was going to stop by and present it to him at the, at his.
I'd like to see us publicize our businesses in Lincoln Park, so if we could have them come up and also, you know, there was a, there were some residents, again, that are helping the city look better by taking care of their property. I want to publicize that thing. I want to say congratulations. You're doing a good job. So if we can get Jack's up here and get the other people up here, I'd really like to see that.
I'll extend an invitation to him to attend the next meeting.
Great. The other thing, you know, the city manager brought up about the indigent court funds. Have you talked to anybody about having any kind of legal action to stop that at all? I mean, just talking to our representatives may not do the trick. Can we do something as a DCC or, or a group to, you know, seven dollars a person, more than seven dollars a person per year for something as ridiculous as this, is, to me, doesn't make any sense. It, it seems that we've got to be able to do something to stop that kind of, you know, the, the state just telling us we're going to pay it, and that's all there is to it.
Why, I'm sorry, the DCC meeting was, was scheduled for, but was canceled due to the weather. And I'm sure that that's going to be something that's brought up at our next meeting.
I, I hope it is, because, you know, we, we, the state has pushed us around for so many, for so many years. They've taken our revenue sharing away. They put unfounded mandates, unfunded mandates, and it seems like we're, we're always like being poked for more money from the state. And I'm hoping that we can, we can bring that, I hope you'll bring that up if you're there. I know that I thought, because of the snow, we didn't have that meeting last week. I was going to attend that meeting myself.
Perhaps tell them what the DCC is.
Oh, the Down River Community Conference. It's, it's sixteen cities in the Down River area that get together once a month and talk about some of the problems that we share. And we work on seeing what we can do as a unit to affect government and affect change. So hopefully, if, if the mayor can bring that to their attention and we can get some action on this. I, you know, I for one am not somebody who's willing to sit by and just say, oh, you really shouldn't have done that. I'm a fighter, and I think we need to fight. Every time you turn around, somebody's picking your pocket. It's about time that we said, no, you're not. Thanks, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Higgins.
Thank you, Your Honor. And correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, is there not a law that if the, the state mandates something, that they can't do it without funding?
I have read that.
I think, I think we have grounds for, for fighting that, at least the funding of it. I, I too would like to add my congratulations to the Boost, the Boost Phone people. They, there was at their anniversary, and it was very nice. And they do a, do a lot for the city and their business down at the North End, and a lot of the North End businesses don't get the credit that they deserve sticking around. The last twenty years have not been real good for businesses in Lincoln Park, but these are people who stuck it out, and, and, and thank you very much to those people. Another big event was this past Saturday for this city. The rock band Detroit Rock City put on a concert for Parks and Rec, and giving the money back to Parks and Rec as a fundraiser to support our programs. And I'd like to thank that band. They're a Kiss tribute band, and they did a wonderful job. And a good, I, I, thank you. Young, these are young people giving back to the city. And again, that, you don't see enough of that. A couple of quick dates I'd like to throw out and remind people of, the All Day Jam is coming, March sixteenth. This is an all-day music.
March twenty-fourth.
I'm sorry, March twenty-fourth. I was looking at the wrong, wrong thing on my schedule. I'm sorry. March twenty-fourth, will be music there for, from noon and on. We'll have stuff for the, for the kids for the first couple of hours. And all the funds go to help pay for our parade, so this is an event that pays for another event. And I encourage everybody to come out. Last year was a real good time, and we're hoping to have a, a good time. Now, the March sixteenth date, which I mentioned earlier, this is something that's a little closer to my heart. The Lincoln Park Swim Team is doing their alumni meet. This is the Swim Team's big fundraiser of the year. But it, it's anybody who has ever swam for Lincoln Park at any time and any capacity, we welcome you to come back. And there are some swimming events, and if you, if you can't physically do the physical, the swimming events, we also have some sales going on. We have some other fun things going on. And then we invite everybody to stay over afterwards for some food, and I'd like to welcome everybody to that. That's it for tonight, Your Honor.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Kelsey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few things. I didn't make the February twentieth meeting, because I went to a pipeline safety meeting that the pipeline companies put on for the hazmat people and for the Police Department, DPS, and so on and so forth, which was very good. And unfortunately, it falls on the twentieth, which is the day after the Mondays we usually have, but because it's a holiday, we have the council meeting on Tuesday, so that kind of messed me up, so. It was a good meeting. I got a lot of information, and people don't realize the pipelines that do go through the city. There's a large amount of them, as far as how they are maintained and operated by the pipeline companies, and also what happens if they do have a problem. So it was kind of interesting. I've been to a couple of them. I missed the last couple, only because the, again, the scheduling, but. The other thing I'd like to talk about is CERT, which is, walks right into the first article. CERT is the Citizens Emergency Response Team. They're going to have a training for disastrous preparedness on the dates of April thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth. And you can sign up online. You have to sign up by March thirty-first. You have to be over the age of eighteen. And the first day Friday is from five to nine P.M. right over here in our own CPW building, where we just got the radios for that, that is going to be done. And I think the CPW and the CERT and the Neighborhood Watch, these are all programs that benefit the city. I think the city saved a ton of money and a ton of, of good will among the residents when the issue happened with electrical outage not too long ago, when CERT came and took over. And that's one of the reasons, I'm assuming, they're, they're getting the radios and the base and all that stuff, because they've had problems with that in the city. But anyways, if you're really interested in getting some hands-on experience and working with some very nice people and very qualified people, I think that you ought to give them a jingle there and come on down and at least say what it's all about and see if you don't want to join. I also attended a luncheon at Crystal Gardens that they have for elected officials and anybody else, that they have guest speakers. And the guest speaker was Debbie Dingle that happened to be there that talked about the budget process in Washington and some of the gridlock they had in Washington. And it was kind of interesting to hear her perspective on it, and in front of a group of, not only a lot of high school students were there, but there was a lot of different people from different disciplines and that to listen to what's going on in Washington. The other thing is that, and the mayor mentioned this, is that the Belmont, with the cooperation of the pastors in Lincoln Park and myself, and a lady called Simone Kalbus, and, and one of the physicians we have put on. the physicians we have, put on a nice little wellness thing at Viber Hospital on Saturday. They're for low-income people and people without insurance. And they had a lot of people there. I know the mayor came as I was coming. I'm sure he got tested. But there's a lot of people in this city that don't take advantage of those. It was a very nice program. The services were free. They did some blood testing. They did some other stuff there. They had people there from the veterans community to give them, talking about veterans issues and all that stuff. I would like to see more people participate. These are, these are, a lot of, these issues are well put on. I mean, a lot of people came down to this issue to put on for the residents and that. And a lot of the people that came there, they don't get paid to do that. They do that and they try to help out the community and try to help out people that are less fortunate than us, so that, give them some access to some of these programs that are available. The other thing is, is that sooner or later, the, sooner, the pastors, myself and Simone Kalbus are putting together a free clinic that we're gonna have in that building that's gonna be up and running, and the date will be, you know, coming out sooner, or excuse me, later on that. So that's gonna be something I hope people take advantage of. The other thing is, is that the, we all talked about Boost Mobile, and I agree with everybody said that they've been there twenty years and like Mike says and like Tom says, is that very friendly people. I mean, you walk in and you thought you were at home. I mean, and I know the mayor came in there and the same thing. Very friendly. They do anything for you. They've stuck it out like Mike said and Tom said. I think, you know, these are the businesses that get the good and the hard and also the times that are very good for them. But, you know, they've been there a long time. It's a family that runs it. And I think that, I think Tom said this, is we should have started participating and come in there, and they do have some parking issues, which we talked about. But I think those are one of the businesses that's been here for a long time. I mean, and I think it's something to be said about those people that stick it out in the community, and I appreciate that. The other issue is that, Tom was talking, you were talking about the cost of the engineering cost for Hennessy. We've been kicking around for a long time, I don't, and I'm sure the council's aware of this, about getting a resident engineer for the city down at the DPS to do some of these things where it don't cost us an arm and a leg. And to paraphrase Mario, he would be a little bit descriptive about what's that costing us, but we haven't done nothing about it for a variety of reasons. And I think that's something that we need to take another look at because we did have an engineer down there that was a temporary part-time that had all the credentials, did a lot of stuff, and then there wasn't enough work for him. Well, there is work on small projects that I think we can afford to keep this individual, or at least bring him back. So that's something that maybe the council would want to discuss later on about how we do that as far as trying to keep some of the costs under control so it doesn't cost us an arm and a leg for a small engineering project, which still requires an engineer, but it's not a large engineering project. The last thing I'd say is that the issue with stuff for the CPW and the radios, there's too much of it. We have to start having a process where some of these things cut, start coming through the, in my opinion, the right venue so that we start looking at some of these organizations that have been working on a shoestring and can't for a variety of reasons get money or get it allocated. So they can not only get the resources to do the job, but it doesn't rob them from the other resources that we allocate for the issue of running the organization. And I think this is something that is behoves us as a council to try to look into that more and more and to address those issues because, you know, we divide up the money for the CDBG, and we're assuming all this money's going a certain way. And then we find out the departments or the individual, you know, it has to use it for something else. That's not the whole intention of that project. The whole intention when somebody comes to us and gives us a speech is this is what the money and the money's gonna be, and not everybody gets a dollar. We all decide which, who's gonna get it and who's not. So I think that's something in the future we need to talk about to make sure that we look a little bit further about some of these issues and put a process in place where we don't have to do that. We can have a budget maybe, like the city manager said, later than sooner, but still get it, put it on the agenda to be done. The last thing I'd say is that some of the stuff in the city, and I've mentioned this before, it doesn't come through the right departments. Sometimes what happens, I've been on numerous commissions, and I've also attended numerous commission meetings, and some of the stuff is a big disconnect still between some of the organizations, okay? And I think that has to be tightened up a little bit. And I don't know how to address that yet because they're not televised and they don't, the minutes they put out are not really given to the council, but maybe they should be. Maybe the minutes of the DDA, the minutes of the police and fire, they should all be given to the council and all the rest of the, the CIC, you know, I get them. I know I do. But I mean, some way to keep the council up to date about some of the items that should require council stuff, or maybe there's something that is being done there that the council should get involved in, vice versa. Because, you know, there's too much of a disconnect I've seen in this city still, even though we've been real hard at making the disconnect less, we still have a hard time communicating within our own organization, and that just takes time. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Dartzinski.
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay, as Councilman Higgins mentioned, March twenty-fourth, the All Day Jam at the VFW Post, eleven twenty-five Ford Street. Please go to my Facebook page or, and start sharing the poster more and more because it has the website on there. Advanced tickets still available, of course. First four hours, noon to four, family fun time. Four to midnight is bands and DJ music. Two of the bands are listed on the website. We need raffle baskets. Just drop them off that morning on Saturday, the twenty-fourth, at eleven A.M., please, so we have enough time to get them displayed out on the tables. If you want to make food donations, just email me, call me, send a smoke signal, carrier pigeon, please. If you want to just bring food donations throughout the day between, say, noon and eight P.M., just bring food. All of this helps to cut down on the cost of putting on the event, and then more of the money goes, goes back to support the parade. So several Fridays ago, I'm taking posters to Al Petrie's Bike Shop, and they must have the most amazingly well-insulated windows in the world because I didn't hear the Ford SUV flip over on Ford Street into Garfield. So I walk out, and there's a flipped-over Ford SUV on Garfield. So I walk over there, and I see the guy talking to OnStar or talking to Central Dispatch, but it seemed like there was a disconnect between trying to get a good description as to what the location was, and so I started calling 911, told him to side street. And then I figured I better stick around since I didn't see the accident. But actually, by that point, the police and the fire department were already responding, and everybody knows what, how lovely the traffic is on Ford Street at five fifteen in the evening on a Friday, especially right there. So the, it was a four-car, four, five-car security, security, safety perimeter set up. Four cars on Ford Street, one back on Garfield in front of Los Sarcos there, Fort Park and Garfield. Then the, then fire rescue circled back around, came in. Seventeen-year-old girl was hurt. Don't know any details about that. City towing shows up. They back in, flip over the SUV. Pretty interesting to watch that. Pretty interesting, you know, unless it's your own accident, you don't, you don't see everything going on all, from beginning to end. And if it's your own accident, you're not paying attention to little nuances and all this. But, so I get back in my truck. Exactly one half hour has gone by. From the time that I walk out of Al Petrie's and call Central Dispatch to the time I'm back in my truck, a half hour. And everything was clockwork, efficiency, efficient, and professional, which is why I immediately went home and emailed Matthew and the police chief, the deputy chief, and chief Martin over at the fire department because to actually just sit there and watch it all, we're really lucky in this town with the challenges that we have and how understaffed that these two departments are to have such professionalism. And I honestly, I know that gets lost. The appreciation gets lost. We're very lucky. Twenty minutes into that, I believe, two of the cars, two of the police cars on Ford Street had to peel off, circle on, circle around Ford Street, and they were heading north past Southfield. And when I pulled into my driveway, my girlfriend calls me, "Did you know that there's a fire going on by, by the market next to B.C.'s?" Actually, it wasn't the market. It might have been a car fire. So those two cars had to leave, peel off, go and secure, secure that, secure that situation for the fire department. So this is not a day in the life of the police and fire department. This is like two hours in one day of what is routine for them. So appreciate your fire department and your police folks. That's, I mean, that, you take any four lines, put them together and call it a city, but it's, 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 it's public services like that that make it a real community. So, so I just can't say enough good things about that. That was, was, it was, just to watch it all, I was like, wow, we've, we've got, we've got the best people right here. Downriver Book Fair, second annual officially scheduled at the Lincoln Park High School. Everybody mark the date down, December first. That is a Saturday. Ten A.M. to six P.M. We're still working on all the details. One of the details we're working on is we need volunteers. So get ahold of me. I guess also you can contact Mike Higgins. You can also contact the high school librarian, Nicole Kessler, the city librarian. She is involved in this. So if you want to get involved, get involved because we need a lot of people to put on the book fair. It'll be our second one. It's gonna be bigger. We're looking at seventy-five vendors. So if you want to be a vendor and sell books, just send me an email. So, oh, yeah, vendor fee is twenty dollars for a table, and that'll be ten A.M. to six P.M., December first, Saturday, Second Annual Downriver Book Fair. Oh, boy. Okay, yeah, I gotta talk about this. If I can go right to the edges of Robert's Rules of Orders here. So let's just cut to the short. I've asked for volunteers, especially volunteers that have trucks and vans. I've been asking for that for a lot of years. Come the end of March, due to the loveliness of being born with a lot of vision problems and now glaucoma and a lot of other medical, technical stuff, so I might be losing my driver's license in a few weeks. And so the F-150 black truck that you see at all the events that I'm at, that's my truck. I haul a lot of stuff and then haul it back to my house for all these events that I'm involved in. So we really need people to step forward with volunteers that have trucks and vans and that can store stuff because in three weeks, I might not be driving anymore. And I'm just gonna keep that one short and sweet. If you've got a truck or a van in this town, please get ahold of me because we really need you. And there are events coming up that need truckloads of stuff moved and then moved back. So, so we'll call that, we'll call that that. Saturday. Okay, so of the, when we, when we passed the resolution to work on seven collective things that the mayor and councils, mine was, mine was to, for the city to host an economic conference, which has been rescheduled for April twenty-eighth. This is to hear a presentation on the Capitol Homestead Act. Dr. Norman Kerwin from the Center for Economic and Social Justice will be coming in from Virginia. We had a small, we had a small study session on this last, this last Saturday with city officials, myself, city officials from Inkster, Detroit, and Wayne County came in, and Dr. Kerwin gave us a small micro overview, a shortened overview of how the Capitol Homestead Act works. And we're using that small planning conference to help catapult into much larger involvement of more public officials and special guests for the economic conference that will be on April twenty-eighth. It's a very big idea. It's a second, separate layer of economic activity. Wayne County has done a lot of dynamic things since its inception, and this type of economic idea has to start someplace in America, so it should start here. Yeah, seven dollars and sixty-five cents per person, per capita for the indigent fund of people that kind of can't afford a lawyer. So. Pay attention to government, people. I mean, I really, literally do not know how many more times I can say that in my life, but these things happen because people do not pay attention to government at all levels. I hate to be the fodder and enforcer on these things, but you gotta pay attention to the details, or else something like this would not have been pushed forward by a few people within the state legislature and it gets signed off. So, and I'm being nice here, trust me. J. Sharp, J. Sharps, I went, I went to high school with him. He was forty-nine years old when he died of leukemia. It's unbelievable. So actually, I guess that makes me feel much better about my eye problems. It was just an honor to go to the viewing at Molson's and, and, and watch the, the police stand guard over his casket. I actually didn't know him that well in high school. My buddy John Hall knew him quite well, and, you know, just one dot's finest, so thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Parkinson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Makes it hard to make a report when everybody goes first and talks about everything you need to talk about. I got two things I want to touch on, and Councilman Kelsey brought it up, the deengineering. It's gonna cost more than a job. When we had the roads committee, me and Mario were on it, it was about ninety-six. We suggested a city engineer at that time. So it's been rolling around for a long time, but we need, maybe some of the bigger engineering projects, we need to bring a company in, but so many everyday problems we have. This, a roof, you know, it'd be a lot cheaper for us to actually have one on staff. The DUA tours that are coming up, me and Councilman Kelsey went to the last one, six, three months ago. They put in a very good presentation. Anybody that goes in is gonna learn a whole lot about this sort of treatment plan. You can answer a lot of questions, but normally, with the presentation they put on, they answered all my questions except a few. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well... On Thursday, March twenty-second, at the high school cafeteria, I believe that's where it's going to be, at six P.M., the Rotary is putting on their Family Fun Night, which is a, there's a lot of different presentations that are there, some games for the kids. There's hot dogs. There's chips. There's a good time. So you and your family plan on making an evening there. Ronald McDonald will be there, yes, and Matt Coppler, so where can you go wrong?
Is Matt Coppler? I'll pay to see that.
Okay. The police department and their community policing arm, so I guess it would, it'd go to Chief Waters. Congrats to them for a successful coffee with a cop program that they did in conjunction with the, the Dick's and the Dick's McDonald's. It was a very nice situ, a very nice program that they had. Come in, Mr. Duchesne, excuse me. That very nice program that they had put on. On March fourteenth, which is next Wednesday, at the Lincoln Park High School Auditorium, which will be the state of the city address and the state of the district. Terry Dangerfield will be there. I will, will be there, probably three or four other people. So, but at six-thirty P.M., and there will be cake. And lastly, before our next meeting, St. Patrick's Day will come along. It's on a weekend this year. I think it's a Friday and Saturday. So I want to wish all of you a St. Patrick's Day, but be mindful that, to be safe out there, be responsible with, it is a time for imbibing, but just make sure you have a designated driver and have a good time, but have a responsible time as well. Looking at that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. And there's no discussion, so court call their own, please.
Councilperson Murphy?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Dartzinski?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Parkinson?
Yes.
So you can put the big shoes?